Kia hora, te merino. Kia fa'ka papa, ponamu, te moana. Te kua rahi ma tato, i te rangenei. Araha atu, ara ha mai. Tato i a, tato ka toa, hau i e ta i kea.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to our council meeting for the 13th of August. Moving to item one, apologies. We'll note the mayor's leave of absence. We'll note that councillor Johansson is attending remotely via Zoom today. And I have an apology for lateness from councillor Mike Davidson, which I'm happy to move. Do I have a second at MScandret? All those in favour say aye. Aye. That's all I had noted. Yep, alright, thank you. Declarations of interest. I've got an interest in item 17, so we'll need to run a process to put somebody else in the chair for that item. We'll deal with that when we get there. Public participation, we have a number of public participation items this morning. The first of which is a group of students from a number of Christchurch schools. So from Christ College, from Christchurch Girls High School, Shirley Boys High School, Rangiruru and St Margaret's College. So good to have you all with us this morning and welcome. This is a presentation regarding the Eco Action Nursery Trust, growing and planting native trees in the Christchurch Red Zone. So thank you very much indeed for joining us this morning. And we're certainly looking forward to the information that you've got to share with us. So I'd invite, I think you're going to come to the table just two at a time. So I'd invite you to the table to start the presentation. Thank you.
Hello, my name is John Wong and I'm from Christ College. And today we're here as student representatives to talk to you about Eco Action Nursery Trust. So we have 11 schools currently participating in different stages of a nursery. So from planting seeds to then potting them and then eventually planting them out into the red zone.
So so far this year we've had three community tree plantings where we take the trees that are grown in the in the schools and we've planted them out in the red zone so far in QE2 and at Kamehun at present. And it's made up of the students from the schools and their families and also some community participation as well.
Hi, I'm Rosa from Rangie. Pretty exciting. Oh, this one's on me.
So I'm here at Zan from Shirley Boys High School. So as you can see in these photos here, it has been quite successful with the plantings over at Brickhead Reserve, which is kind of in the Chisenough area. So we've had successes with the ribbonwood and kofi. And also native birds returning to the red zone, which is really good to see.
Now, what does it mean? So there are 11 schools in Christchurch that are a part of the nursery action. And so we have a nursery at school where we take the smaller plants and put them in bigger pots that will then be replanted. We've found at Rangie that there is, we've increased school involvement by having it as an opportunity for community service hours. And obviously with the more people that help, we are, we're projecting that the more trees will be planted in the future, which is very exciting.
Hi, I'm Will Law from Christ College. So this is a list of the sponsors and schools affiliated with the trust. I remember when I was year nine, two or three years ago, there were only three or four schools involved. And so it's a very vastly growing project right now. And sponsors involved, CLS, Canterbury Landscapes, Triple C Parks Community Partnership, Enviro West, Isaac's Construction, Shirley Boys High School, Christ College, Rangie and St Margaret's, Mowing the Red Zone, Tiki Wines and Mainline Tanks and Drums as well as I in Zid.
Hi, this is Yu from St Margaret College. So you can see this is the picture taken from the project. The yellow jacket are, we call them eco warriors, so they take us tests and they help the people with planting. And usually we finish an hour before we planned to plant. And one thirds are actually volunteer. They bring them, they bring their little kits. It's really warm hearted to see everyone involved. And it's really awesome to see everyone's doing something good for the environment, to see native bird come back. Yeah, thank you for making the presentation.
Hello, my name's David Newton. I'm the, a member of the Eco Action Nursery Trust. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the Christchurch City Council Parks Department for putting so much effort and being so collaborative in supporting our actions. And hopefully that will continue as we continue to involve more schools in coming years.
Hi, I'm just wondering if anybody has any questions about the project.
So we've got a minute or so left, so Aaron, yep.
Yeah, just one of the native trees in particular can have quite a valuable crop for honey. What percentage is manuka being planted?
I might ask that. We've got 20 different species and so about 20 years will be manuka.
Right, and have you considered doing manuka clusters?
Most of the trees are planted according to the ground.
Right.
So that's very weak. Manuka, if it's dry, we can plant it.
Cool, thank you.
Great, thank you. Jimmy, just quickly.
Yes, your record is fantastic. 2016, planted only 350. Up to the 2019, 3,410 times. But back to the 2016, how many schools?
Think back in 2016, there were only three schools, but in the last year and a half or so, that's expanded exponentially. And we've got triple or more than the number of schools. So that has really helped to expand the whole project.
Okay, fantastic, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Look, thank you so much for coming along this morning and sharing with us what you're doing. I think the pictures say it all. I mean, this is clearly a project which is hugely important. I'm sure there are some great opportunities for learning and for education and for good experience around this as well. But the results of what you're doing in a part of town which is so important to us. Thank you very much indeed for that work and thank you for sharing it with us this morning. Thanks very much indeed. Thank you. Thank you. Great, thank you very much indeed. So now moving to item 3.1.2. Tanya Didham and Christine Hickey on behalf of greening the red zone regarding the Avon Otakaro River Corridor and greening the red zone. So again, thank you for joining us. Great to have you with us. And you have five minutes for this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kia ora. I may just borrow my bit of paper that I'm actually wanting to read off. That group is amazing. We love Eco Action, they're doing incredible work. Dave Newton's incredible. And we're representing greening the red zone, but also actually Avon Otakaro Forest Park, who obviously contribute here today. We assume you've all read the letter that we sent on the 11th of August, which was highlighting our concerns. So just briefly, won't go through all of it again. We represent the trees and the plants and animals that can't speak for themselves in the red zone. Not to exclude other ideas or groups, but to ensure that ecosystem restoration is the foundation and fabric of the corridor. There's always a danger that green space is considered empty space and by default is whittled away by, albeit well meaning, projects. Ecological restoration provides the literal roots and branches of the corridor's continuity, spreading out from the river to communities and to the future. It allows us to reap maximum benefit from the opportunities to adapt to climate change and our biodiversity crisis as well. It's a golden twofer in that respect. It's almost exactly a year since Megan Woods endorsed the Otakaro Avon regeneration plan. So we want to know why we are not more prepared. Why don't we have more council-supported, community-led restoration projects like the one we just saw actually? Why are we hearing there's not enough plants to roll out? And where's the leadership that's actually really driving the plan? The regeneration plan determined what land uses people wanted and where those uses might go and set the dimensions of the green spine. So years and years of hard mahi went into that document. And it was a real slog at times, but Regenerates extensive consultation consistently showed that residents want nature and clean waterways in the corridor. The plan that came out of that holds the vision for the corridor. It is the master plan. Regarding current leases and applications, there is a conflict between the primary directive of ecological restoration and the concept of transitional use because trees are not temporary. So we're interested to know how council views that catch 22. We want to know what stage stock bank development is at. Infrastructure teams will have to work alongside projects that rely on their placement. And we're not talking about consultation anymore, we're really talking about collaboration as we again just saw with Eco Action. Brilliant. Many volunteers working in the corridor already hold extensive expert knowledge around water management, restoring ecosystems, lighting. Engage with them. If we don't restore enough habitat, it won't support sustainable wildlife populations and it will just remain a park instead of becoming a functional ecosystem, which is what we're really looking for. The halo effect is a strategic way of planting in nodes that naturally expand rather than planting large expansive waves of seedlings with mulch and so on. There's less startup resource and minimal disturbance to existing vegetation. Council may be where the halo effect is being employed by Dunedin's Eco Sanctuary, Orakuni, and is functioning really well in Wellington where Zelandia's neighbouring suburbs have visiting kakaa and tuie are common birds. As well as your immediate response today, we'd like to know which committee would be best for us and the affiliated groups to meet with in the near future because five minutes is really not long to have this kind of robust discussion. Thank you.
Indeed, thank you very much. Anything further to add?
I'm open to questions. If there's not questions, I can certainly add more.
Okay, so Pauline.
As chair of the Three Waters Infrastructure Committee, I'm happy to pick up the issue with the stock banks and see if we can get some information to you about what the program is there. Because that should be a piece of work we could start firming up now that we own the land. So I'm happy to do that.
Excellent, and we've had staff making notes in the room as you've been speaking. So I'm sure between committee chair and staff, we can, we can pick that up. And Sarah.
And I've been liaising with Andrew Rutledge already on the ecological restoration, the plant sourcing, all of that kind of stuff. So happy to meet up and.
Yeah, I think what we'd like to do is have a, like a sort of more, one of the 15 minute slots where we can bring other groups in and we can really sort of hash it out a little bit better.
Yeah, that would be really good.
Great, I mean, we've got the chairs of the two relevant committees, obviously already thinking about this, very keen to work with you. Why don't we pick this up and work out what the best way of taking that forward would be? That sounds excellent. Sarah.
Are there areas that you're specifically concerned about where you feel that the long-term vision for the green spine is not being taken into account?
I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, we know pretty much all of the stakeholders pretty well. I mean, we've all been, had our heads over this for nine years. And there aren't really any people left who aren't on board with the plan. So for example, there are some groups who are looking at large pieces, large leases, Revolution being one, the Eco Sanctuary being another. And they all have in their mind to carry the plan forward. But it does require that, it does require some leadership from, from the owner as well. Not quite, but you know, we're heading in that direction. It's not like we don't know it's coming.
Or, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, just to add to that, one of the points that we made in the letter that you've got is that there is currently no governance structure for the ongoing development of the area. And whilst we are very excited about and we really support Te Kira Kahiku Hiku's work and the very good people who are on that group, that's only to do with transitional uses. And there needs to be a community absolutely collaborating with the council in order to govern what happens with that really important part of our city.
Indeed, look, thank you very much indeed for coming along and raising these issues with us today. Thanks for the presentation. And I'm sure between the chairs of the two relevant committees and the conversation that you've started, we'll be able to look at how we can achieve some progress. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you. All right, now our next public participation item is via Zoom. So we've got Paula Snowden speaking on behalf of the Problem Gambling Foundation regarding community funding and pokey machines. So Paula, are you with us?
Yes, I am. I can't see myself, I can't see you.
All right. That's all good. So you've got five minutes to make the presentation this morning. We can hear you loud and clear and we can see you now as well. So good morning, thanks for joining us and go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Kia kautaka toa. Just have to, I have to start to counsel. This presentation is not to say that groups shouldn't receive community funding and sports shouldn't be, not at all. Simply a presentation to ask councillors and council to be really clear about where the money comes from and to be really clear about the impact of the losses and what could be done with them in the future. So if people are willing to drive through, if you would mind, the second slide. In Christchurch City, someone following them down, or do I need to do that? Yeah, thank you. In Christchurch City, a day, over $200,000 is lost in two 1,320 pokey machines. This is not public casino. Spread across 83 venues. That's $77 million a year in gambling losses. Gambling losses are, people have taken their winnings. If they have the next slide please. Of that, that 200, over $200,000, 30% of gambling loss are from problem gambling. Only a very small number of people actually play the pub poker more than once a year. And only 3.7 play the pub poker bigger. It's a small number of people who are losing over $200,000 a day. The 37 of the 83 venues are in the more deprived areas of your city. Our small number of people losing all this money also in the venues that are in the smallest areas, the most impoverished areas of your city. It's a complex system. The 1,320 pokey machines are spread across 83 venues run by a range of trusts. We are not challenging whether the trusts should or shouldn't exist. They are, they are societies, they have purposes. But these, the money is coming out of the poorer areas, it's $200,000 a day. And it's important, I'll go down to the second, the next, the second slide, next one down to five. The $77 million that is lost a year, 46.2 million of those losses go into the system. If you're wanting to support communities and community sport, really to ask, please be asking ourselves as the country, because this picture is true all over New Zealand. Ask ourselves, is that the best way to fund the community? If the 14 million wonderful, 46 million is getting lost in the system and is not, Christchurch is not orbiting from that. The next slide. Of the 14, we collect this information on where grants, which trusts pay what grants. And it's based on the information that they've published with the Department of Internal Affairs. So we, there'll be sometimes there'll be little variances in how much money on particular times because of the timing of the posting of the information. But the picture doesn't change year on year. This is about what it is for Christchurch. Those are the trusts and those are the types of grants. The Air Rescue Service, by the way, also funds work in Upper Hut, which is a city north of Wellington. Upper Hut loses $25,000 a day, there's 46,000 people in the city. Just to remind you of the harm, this is well established and we all know, but it doesn't impact fairly. So the next slide down, number eight. Maori are two and a half times the rate of gambling harm, Pacific 2.3, Asians twice. People who live in the poor, low income and poorer communities spend three times more on gambling than people who live in affluent communities. This is a layer upon layer upon layer of harm that is embedded in the system. The next slide down, we often hear that without poker, it will be the end of the hospitality industry, that the hospitality industry produces more employment. It does. But poker's are not allowed to be used to have the hospitality industry viable. It is against the law. The hospitality industry has to be viable in its own right. And we argue that if all of that money, if that $77 million a year was being spent in the productive part of the economy, you would have more employment and more spend in the hospitality industry. And the next slide down please. The NZAR report that we and the Salvation Army Commission indicate that the retail sector generates approximately four million, four jobs per million dollar in sales. Diverting $77 million in gambling losses has the potential for 308 jobs, of which 123 could be in Christchurch retail. The population that loses this money in gambling don't spend discretionary income, they spend their entire income. That income will be diverted into housing, household consumables, service industry, motor vehicles. It will go into areas of the economy that you want to flourish and that you want to be successful. Because the community funding model as it is now sucks out 60% of those gambling losses into a system, we say it's just simply not efficient. Now, what do you do about that? How do you say, well, let's make community funding and community sport sustainable? Let's make it fair and transparent. What are there things we can do about that? And the white paper that I distributed to you earlier suggests the transition so that we can unpick this and try and make it fairer. And if you have a good policy, which we encourage the council to adopt, look first at where the money is lost and who's losing it, not just where it goes. Remember that 60% of the losses from gambas go into the system. Only 40% can get distributed. Commit to reducing the numbers of pokey machines. Permit, don't permit venue locations or club mergers. And there's a provision in the Act, section 314, that's never been used. And it's what really hamstrings councils who want good, good public health approach to gambling in their community. The Secretary of the Department of Internal Affairs can ask the minister to not permit pokey machines in all sorts of areas besides, for example, in areas of high deprivation. You could transition out of pokey machines by exercising this provision. And as you transition out of pokeys in the poor areas, that money will be spent in other places in the economy.
Now, I am going to need to interrupt, I'm sorry, we're well over the five minutes set aside. But thanks very much indeed for the presentation. Some of the slides you've put in front of us certainly illustrate the story that you're telling very, very well and well understood. And thanks also for supplying documents that we've had uploaded to our system here to read prior to this presentation as well. So thank you very much indeed for joining us this morning. Thanks for your time. Thank you. So now moving to our next public forum item, Keith Ballantyne on behalf of Clubs New Zealand regarding community funding and pokey machines. So Keith, thanks for joining us. You also have five minutes for this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. And it's always a bit hard to follow a problem gambling foundation when you want to talk about the other side of it. I don't have all those sorts of magnificent fancy figures, but I will talk to a wee bit about that at the end of it because there is a fundamental thing wrong with some of the things that they are saying. But one of the biggest things that we have had in clubland is we've tried to diverse ourselves away from we get lumbered in with pubs. And a club is a completely different thing. A club is a not-for-profit organisation and it sits in the community and it is a community facility. And if you, if you do know around Christchurch, we have six very large facilities in Christchurch with over 40,000 people belonging to those clubs. And we take problem gambling very seriously and we look into it. So the clubs, class four gaming and clubs, we don't retain the gambling proceeds for the totally, for the purpose of the club. It's a common misconception. The fact is that we put it into the facility, it is a community facility. We have to do exactly the same as everybody else. We must regularly distribute our gaming proceeds to community groups. And where the gaming proceeds come from is applied directly back into that area. So we are the most direct funding from gaming machines that you can actually get as a model because we are the community. And what's raised in that community is used in that community. So a sample of 20 clubs distributed over 200 external grants totaling just under half a million. So that's stuff that they're going to the outside for. Those 20 clubs, then this is, this is the uncountable thing that we do. And I know, I ran a club for 20 years at Papanui. We let our facility be used by anybody from the community free of charge. So that's invaluable. Alongside that, you have within each club, you'll have all your sporting sections, people enjoying facilities to play bowls, to do dance, to dance, to travel sections, to racing pigeons. Basically, if somebody comes up with an idea and says, can we have a group like that? The clubs will do it. And then of course, the big thing is, and we've noticed over COVID, is the greatest aspect of a club is its sociality. And isn't it far better to have people out socializing than sitting at home drinking rather heavily and forgetting who they are? People need people and we've discovered that over COVID. So the host responsibility, and I know this because I travel the country doing host responsibility training. And in a club environment, we know our, we know our patrons, we know the people that are punted. And I've had many conversations with people, pulling them aside, asking in their circumstances, do you need a break? Sure you're doing this? Yes, they can say to me they've got plenty of money and things like that, but you know, we look after our people. And that's the difference between a club and a pub. You won't hear of an incident in a club where the kids have been left in the car while mum's in playing the poker. Won't happen. They won't last long in a club environment. The one thing that was sort of said thereby, and really what we ask is that look at us differently. Clubs are different to pubs. We are the most direct funding back into the community because we are community facilities. But one of the things which I do have to sort of say against the Problem Gambling Foundation, and look, they do a fantastic job looking after the people that do suffer from this. But the big problem is, and particularly now with technology, if you don't have people gambling in a controlled environment, those people that have got a persons to gamble will still gamble. They'll do it using this thing. They'll do it online, at home, with no controls at all. Isn't it far better to actually, if we've got a system in place now and it's working, it's far better to stay with what it is. So we just asked from a club's perspective, they did have a mention up there that, I saw one club there, well, that's going to go. So Northern Shirley Club will disappear. It's basically in the process of winding up at the moment. So their 11 machines will disappear out of Christchurch. So they're not going anywhere, they're just going to liquidate. So the clubs do need them. It does allow them to continue their facilities and provide the facilities for the people of Christchurch.
All right, thank you very much indeed for the presentation. I will take just one question from Tim.
Thank you. Your comment with regards to online gambling, which actually is a huge issue and it's growing more and more. Do you know if the, A, first question is if the government's looking at that at all? Because the poker's do seem to be the target, which is fair to a point. But the second piece is, do you know the growth, has there been any research on the growth of the online gambling?
It's gone, it's gone wildfire.
Yeah, it has.
Yeah. And precisely during COVID, the growth of it has been horrendous. There is no rules around it. The DIA are a bit slow in tackling it. But there's other ones as well, you know, Lotto's 50 million this week. Do you ever hear how much is spent on Lotto every week? They don't tell us. But if it can jump up by seven million from a Wednesday to a Saturday, how much money's been taken? Unfortunately, poker's are an easy target. But done properly and in. Um, but done properly and in the right environment, that's why we say, well, in a club environment, uh, where it is the community, we look after our people. Um, they're perfectly fine.
And thank you very much for your presentation because I actually didn't know the, I, I'd never put the difference between a club and a pub when it came to pokies, but thank you very much. Cheers.
So a number of us will be very familiar with, um, the, the clubs around town that you noticed. Um, thanks very much indeed Keith for coming along, um, taking your time this morning and making that presentation to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we move to item four, um, oh, three point two, deputations by appointment. And there are no deputations this morning. Item four, presentation of petitions, um, there are none. Um, so next we've got a series of minutes, so items five, six, seven, twenty-six, twenty-seven, eighteen and twenty-eight. Um, I'd propose to move all of those minutes together. Pauline, you'll second. All those in favour say aye. Against, that's carried. Um, and now we move to the community board monthly reports. So it's great to have the community board chairs and deputy chairs, um, back in the chamber with us. Um, and, um, we will just run through them in the same order that they're in the, um, on this run cheese here. Um, so we'll start with Waipuna Sprayden Kashmir Community Board. Um, and we've got, um, the chair and deputy chair, so welcome.
Kia ora tato. Uh, first of all, can I apologise to my, um, colleague, the other board chairs? I had myself bumped up in the order paper because I had a commitment doing JP duty and JP duty has been canned. So, um, I'm here under false pretensions. I just want to start, um, oh, everyone knows Lee, Lee Simpson?
Morning.
The deputy chair.
Morning.
Um, uh, I just wanted to start, um, by talking about two presentations that council staff have provided in the last week. Um, they are excellent presentations and the first one was on ground waste and recycling to the board. Um, and from the Stormwater Team, Paul Dixon. I'm right on Dixon. And, um, excellent presentation on, um, the proposal, the proposals in, no, sorry. That was on contamination of our waterways and the water table by the Stormwater Team. And that was excellent presentation, which I hope goes wider in the community, demonstrating where our, uh, waste has come from, where, sorry, where the contamination of our waterways comes from. And if I've been very boring about zinc from roofs and, um, brake pads, I've said it to one person, I've said it to a hundred people. I hope that is a presentation that goes wider. And the other one, which we saw, Melanie saw at Sprayden, was on the, um, ground waste and recycling. Sorry to get them confused, where the presenter, Tess Theresa, where the presenter, um, was there with a, a council car because she had to take her three children with her and who were thrilled because they never travel in the car, they're always travelling on her bike with her, three of them. Um, and they presented on the high level proposals for ground waste and recycling. And both of those presentations should be seen by every person in our row here. And thanks to the council for supporting staff to do those things. Um, the, uh, the first slide. Did someone press a button?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Next slide, next slide.
Okay, yeah.
This is, uh, the kids coach, kids coaches on the bus, they go round mostly Rowley, they have kids after school and they, uh, teach, educate and support them. Um, and, um, in the middle there is Louise, um, uh, Weller. She and her husband Bernard have been running up for decades. Uh, she is just stepping back from front row activities on the bus and, and doing the actual activities with the children. And she's a step back into organisation. But I just want to honour her and Bernard for the work that they've done for the community, which has been utterly selfless for a long, long number of years. They run a number of activities of which the after-school bus is one.
Shall I do Rowley quickly?
Yeah, do it.
Yeah. So let's hope we're not going back down this avenue, but this was what the Rowley Resource Centre did. So they, um, post-COVID, they, um, letter dropped six hundred people in their community. Um, and they got nearly a hundred food parcels out to people in need. So it's just a good sign of, you know, how, you know, a bit of community cohesion, how we can support our communities. So they also picked prescriptions up for people who needed it. So they were just there as a network to offer support in the community, so.
And food hampers?
Food, yeah, nearly a hundred food hampers, so just acknowledging that effort and it was remarkable, so.
Yeah. Sorry, I jumped to that one and that one, sorry, sorry. Um, the, this, oh, we've missed one, I think, in, in order?
Um, and.
Basketball?
We'll go.
No.
Yeah, we'll keep to the order here then, eh? I'll go, I'll go this one. So we just appointed a board member and that's me onto the Kashmir Stream and Port Hills Working Group. And I think we're, we're getting a higher understanding of if we disturb the hills, if we cut into the hills, they bleed in terms of sediment. Um, it's a huge problem in the Power Heathcote, um, river. And we're just starting to look at what's best practice nationwide. Um, once the sediment gets suspended in the rivers, it's really hard to treat it because it stays suspended. So you've got to either treat it at source, you've got to put small dam structures in, you've got to do planting. So you've got to be more proactive upfront. So there's really a change in mindset of how you start to look at that. And I think there's going to be some exciting things coming from the Kashmir Stream Working Group. And we'll be reporting to the Zone Committee and, and I'm sure we'll be reporting to council as well. But there's a really, it's a really exciting space to be in and I think there's going to, the tyres are going to hit the road soon.
Yeah, well done. Keep going because we're in the wrong order.
I think these are the wrong order than we've got in front of us, so, so, um, apologies there. And we'll go, yep.
Uh, Hoonhay Hoops. Uh, Hoonhay Hoops, it's, um, was, uh, we've had a lot of interest in basketball as all of you would have had and it's overtaken rugby as far as Canterbury goes in terms of youth. Um, which is stor, which is historic. Um, basketball has overtaken amongst youth, has overtaken rugby. And it's very important in our area because one kid can play hoops and a dozen kids can play hoops. It's of vital importance. And the council has responded and they have helped this group at Hoonhay who have actively provided leadership in the provision of lights and the development of the Hoonhay with Emma Pavey, our staff member, with the development of the, um, uh, use of the basketball courts on Hoonhay. Which just incidentally, the lights have also been welcomed by the community as a, a security support. And, uh, there, there's a group of young men now who were boys a few years ago when Emma started working with them, who are now providing leadership right throughout Hoonhay and Rowley, not just in the basketball area, but in the general youth, um, support area. And these young men, um, uh, mostly men, um, uh, together with, uh, Roy Kneely, um, organised the Hoonhay Hoops and, um, ten teams participated. All of them had a great time and it's, uh, the courts there are, uh, providing, for the resource that the council provided, we're getting, we're getting it back and supporting the area ten times over.
Okay, I'll go back to the, um, this is, so this is a, a programme that we're running in council. Um, we had a presentation from Kate Russell and Sally Alley. Alley, Alley, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so this is an educational programme. If we're going to change a culture in terms of stormwater management, it needs to start with youth. So this is a really key programme. They've been doing things like, um, having, um, traps in the school stormwater system to see what gets, goes into the gutters in the school and they've been finding out, you know, basically that connection between what goes in a gutter in a school ends up in the river quite often. So they've been trying to, trying to, you know, again, work on that mindset. They've been doing river cleanups. And again, and this is all start, you know, this is about changing a culture and starting a great place with, with our youth. So great programme and that was a good presentation.
And we feel a bit desperate because Sally Erie, who is the education coordinator for the Healthy Powerhoe Project, has lost, uh, has only got a couple of months of funding left for her job and would be a very big loss for our area if the Healthy Project, uh, Powerhoe, um, project had to die because we couldn't find funding for the coordinator. So we're interested in that as an issue. Um, this is the La Galla, La, La La, La Lana, Night Market. I apologise, yes. Yeah, Lana, yeah, my, my pronunciation in any, in any environment is shocker and particularly in Pacific. Um, this is the night market that was developed, based at Rowley School, but supported by the community. And I've got a grandson who goes to the school and, uh, my, uh, kids were involved in this market as well. It was a great, there's several great evenings, this was just one of the nights that they had.
Do, I'll do Saint Martin's and then.
Menched.
Yeah, okay. So this is, this is Saint Martin's Menched and you can see it's been a hive of activity recently. Um, it's going great guns and I've got to say, we've given them a modest grant of four thousand dollars. Um, they've done the hard yards themselves. Um, they've sourced that, um, prefabricated X classroom, they've consented it, they've built new foundations. Um, they've got that installed in a site on, on Wilson's Road. So they regularly get around thirty, forty people. Um, and you're starting to see some cross-generational, you're seeing, um, grandfathers bringing their grandchildren. So you're seeing, it's just, it's just a beautiful story. Um, and, uh, I just want to give kudos to Dougal Wilson, who's the ex-minister there. Um, John Hinchley and Brian Davis, who's the chair. And with, they are the nucleus of, of what's, you know, brought this to fruition. So I want to give them kudos and it's, it's going great. So, um, really rewarding to see this come into fruition.
That's it. Used every day, that, used every day.
Great, thank you very much indeed. Now, um, that hasn't unfortunately left us time for questions.
Uh, just one point which is brought to, about the stream and the sediment coming off. Our building inspectors have taken up the role of inspecting the building sites from ECAN because ECAN on the hills, um, sediment runoff, because ECAN said that they were unable to fulfil that role. However, they haven't licensed our building inspectors to prosecute. And this has been going on for some time. So could we have a look at that, please, and move that on? That'd be great.
Probably talk to that very briefly. You can, so when the global stormwater consent changed over to council, you're completely right. So there's limited means for enforcement. Um, now the council, the current council inspectors are just doing a tick box when they visit the sites and that's not their expertise. So I think there's going to be more of a pushing movement to have dedicated, somebody who's dedicated in terms of stormwater management or at least one or two expertise personnel that can look at these matters because I think it's, it's needed. It's obviously from issues we're having with our heat cuts.
All right, thanks for raising.
Can I just add to that Andrew, that, um, this came through the Zone Committee that when I was on there, it's not because ECAN can't do it, it was an efficiency of resourcing because the city council staff are out there inspecting the building. So you may as well have one inspection team doing the both. But Tim's right, the, the issue of the enforcement still needs to be addressed, but it's, it was, it was finding efficiencies of one inspection rather than two agencies. And that's an example of us working really well together.
You would have to say that it's almost ineffective because, and it's not their fault, but I am saying that the runoff from the hills, particularly if you're looking down the other end of Kashmir Road, round the Horsewill Quarry etcetera, the runoff from the hills is manifest, manifest.
All right, we are going to need to wrap this up because I want to stick to time, but it's good that it's been raised and we can certainly pick it up in conversations with ECAN. Um, Carolyn and Lee, thank you very much indeed for, um, presenting to us this morning. Great, thank you. All right, so moving on to our next, um. Oh, right, sorry, yes. So we need to, we've got a resolution in front of us, sorry, my apologies, um, to receive the community board report. Um, so this is item eleven. Um, so who wants to move this one? Tim, are you wanting to move this?
Uh, yep, sorry.
Yep, all right. And, um, James, you'll second. That's great, so all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against, that's carried. Thank you. Um, so now we move to the Waipuna, Halswell, Hornby, Ricketton Community Board. Um, Mike, Chair of the Board, welcome.
Thank you very much and an apology from my deputy, Andre Moore, who had recently flown to Auckland, so he thought he might, um, be better off not coming in today. So that's, uh, that's the reason.
All right, thank you.
But anyway, um, yeah, this, it's, yeah, six meetings since our last report to the council. So it's, there's quite a lot in here. I don't want to go over everything that's in our report, but anyway, everybody's got it. But there's just some things that I'd like to, um, to explain. And that's the approval of the extension of the boundaries of the Greater Hornby Residence Association. Um, yeah, towards Marshes Road, towards Prebleton. And one of the reasons for that is because of the eco, um, enviro waste, um, toxic waste plant that's being moved there. And there's also a huge tyre shredding operation that's going to be in Hornby Ward. So that we're really concerned about that. And you'll see that we've also granted, um, up to ten thousand dollars for, um, for some experts to, um, on dust and contamination, air quality monitoring, um, and that as well. So, um, just, just touching on a few other, um, things in our report is we've got the two par days that you'll be talking about later on. Um, and we've had, um, the community organisations in COVID lockdown and really appreciate, um, the, um, the fu, extra funding that our community boards have got through the, um, through the annual plan process to, you know, to help support, um, those community groups and organisations as well. So that's a, a, a big thank you for that. And the, we've got, um, yeah, community service awards and things like that coming up. But also there's just some things that I wanted to, um, just to touch on quickly is the Culture Galore, which we had in, um, in February, um, this year. Over six thousand people turned out to that and what a wonderful event that was. And we also had, um, the Hello Hornby event in, in March, community event. And, um, Connect Two Twenty Twenty, which is a, a, um, was in Harrington Park. And that's a, an opportunity for the students, um, transient student population to actually mix and mingle and get to know with the, um, with the established residents in the area. And, yeah. Sorry, sorry. Um, I'll go back to, I'll go to these slides now. The, um, community. I haven't got anybody to push the buttons here, so I just.
We can do that.
Oh, yeah, the par days, the first one on there was the par days on the Ricketton Road and the dedication, which I've already spoke to, but that was on our PowerPoint as well. So now I'll go to the, um, yeah, that's the one. So we're really, really pleased, um, that the, um, council are being party to, um, to this appeal to the Environment Court. And we're just really disappointed that when, when, um, a, um, an organisation or a business gets a resource consent for their operation with a huge overwhelming support, um, not support from the community, but alerts, alarms from the community. And then when they get the consent, um, then they appeal it. They want those conditions, some of those critical conditions and that consent removed. So I'm really, really pleased that this organisation is actually standing up for the people in this matter. So, um, that's. Now, could I click to the next one? Is the, um, community board plan. We're really, really pleased with that and I hope everybody's got a copy of that. So that's something that we've been working on. And, um, yeah, we're going to adopt it in, um, in, um, at our August meeting. Thank you. And then the Waterloo Road, we've got the, yes, we've got a, a little video clip here and I'd just like to acknowledge, um, the Hornby High School, um, students, um, Zoe Evans and, um, and her, her colleagues that, um, that put this together. It's a, it's a longer, it's longer than, you're just going to see the first, the first, um, clips of it to see what the. So I'll let you watch this.
Students are crossing this road without any clear crossing. There's a high school, a primary school, and an early learning centre along this section of Lordly Road. There are plans to add a leisure centre across from Hornby High School in Calpat. And a cycleway down Waterloo Road. This will be completed in the next few years. Adding to the dangers of Waterloo Road. It's a few years too far away. Should something be done now? Has anything been done? Here's what people in the community have to say on this matter.
So that's quite dramatic and I really, really appreciate the, the work that they've done. And that, trust me, that was not a setup. If you go there any day of the week, you will see exactly that happening. And since we've, I've also just met with the principals of both Hornby Primary and Hornby High School. And they really want to, to meet on staff with the elected members from our community board or anybody else. And, and the staff and to actually see firsthand the volumes and the speed and the size of those, the big trucks and trailers that are trumping up and down there. And there's no pedestrian crossing as such, there's nothing. There's refuge islands and that's it. So it's really, and then we get the new libraries, aquatic centre and that across the road. Of course, if the kids from, from those schools want to get to, to catch a bus, for example, they've got to go through the subway, under the railway line, through Kyle Park and into, into the mall area to catch their buses. So there's a huge, you know, volumes of, of young people travelling that way every day, to and from, every day. So it's something that we really urge some, some action on. So that's, that's really it from me.
All right, thank.
I'd just like to say formally that, that Zoe is, and her team, there's a lot more to that production than what we've seen. But it's just amazing to see that young people have actually taken the initiative to actually do something like that for themselves. So it just shows you that they really care about themselves and their classmates and, and want something done about it. So top marks.
All right, thank you. So I've got a link to that video on the run sheet here. I don't know whether that's been distributed more widely. It would be good if that could be distributed among all councils if it hasn't been already. And my question, if I wanted to go and observe what we've just seen on the video firsthand, what's the best time for me to go there and see that?
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock in the afternoon.
Absolutely.
All right, that's great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sarah.
Thanks, Mike. Yeah, it was good talking to the students out there, a couple of months back now. There's, there will probably be a traffic management plan, a whole pile of work happen when the.
Cycleway?
Well, the cycleway's a bit further down.
No, the cycleway goes past the school.
Does it go past on that?
Yes, it does.
So with that, do we, do you have a timeframe that you can talk to the schools on that? And then, because there's the stuff that has to happen around Kyle Park development with the South West Leisure Centre Two.
Yes, we've just heard from our engineers here this, this morning that there's work in progress in matters, is there not? So would you like to comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, if there's a potential for the, that section of cycleway to be built first, for example, or, yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, the project team's currently working on a, a design for a crossing around this location. And that design's about 85% complete at the moment. And it's also, in terms of the construction, obviously it's got to go through the approvals process and that as well. But we'd look to accelerate the construction a bit ahead of the other work as well, so.
And are there temporary measures that we can do in the meantime? And does the school have a travel safe plan? I mean, is there, you know, there's a pedestrian refuge there, can we, can we guide students? I mean, can the school participate in stuff as well?
We do do school travel planning, usually with.
Primary schools.
Primary and intermediate schools, but we do occasionally do that with high schools if they want to participate in that. There's obviously, that comes with, the schools have to sort of buy into that as well. And also contribute to, in terms of buying into the outcomes of that.
Yeah, I mean, that takes a bit of a time anyway, but with the innovating streets, kind of the changes that have been made for accessible streets, those kind of things, are there temporary measures that we can put in until the cycleway is under construction at the site to enable safer crossing? Without, because those things don't need huge consultation.
No, I mean, it's, yeah, potentially, I haven't, I haven't looked at that, so.
Yeah. Could maybe that be one of the things that the board and you guys look at? Because there's, there's heaps more potential in that for the temporary stuff. And I've seen examples in other cities now where that's been done, so.
There's a, there's another project that we'd want to get into the, into the, into the LTP. And that's a Chalmers Street extension, right through Kyle Park to, to the intersection of Hay Hay Road. So that would, that.
Avoid traffic.
That would take a lot of traffic and pressure away from the Hornby Mall itself. And it would improve the, the safety of pedestrians, cyclists and everybody through that corridor. But anyway, that's, that's a work in progress. The design work has already been done for that, it's in this building. And the mall, the Hornby Mall, have spoken to, are very keen on looking at progressing that.
All right, so let's be thinking of what processes can be used to pick up both of these projects. The video certainly resonates and thanks for showing it to us. And if the board can continue to work with staff, but certainly you've made us aware of it and it's, it's something we've got an interest in. So thank you very much indeed, Mike, for showing us the video, raising those issues, but also for your presentation this morning. Thanks very much, thank you. Oh, Jimmy, right, okay, yep, so you'd like to move? And do I have a second? Anne Galloway would like to second. All those in favour. We're, we're done with questions, we're, we're done with questions now, we're out of time for questions. No, we're out of time for questions, this has now been moved and seconded, I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Against, that's carried, thank you.
I'll answer your question later.
You can always take a quick. I'm sure you can take it offline. All right, that's great, thank you. So now moving to our next community board, Waikora, Linwood Central Heathcote Community Board. And Alex, Chair of the Board, thank you very much indeed for joining us this morning. Thank you.
Kia ora, thanks so much for having us here this morning. I will take the report as read and just speak to some of our slides that we have. Sorry, we don't have as many pretty pictures as the other boards, but we will next time, absolutely. Okay, so regrettably, obviously, we formalised as a board Sally Buck's resignation from the community board recently. And to cover this vacancy for the Central Ward, a by-election is being held Friday the 16th of October. We already have three candidates that have put their names forward. And if anybody is watching the live stream or watching it back, we would love you to get involved in making our board in the Central Ward area more diverse and make some positive change within our area. So please get your nominations in. And they need to be in by the 20th of August. And apologies for my shameless advertising. We have no par days to council, but we just wanted to say thank you again for the Linwood Escape Public Transport Hub. And just a quick update, we will have the updated landscape plan coming to us at our next board meeting. So looking forward to kickstarting that. Just an update around one of our significant council projects, Tapau Toitoi, our Linwood Pool. We had the sod turning ceremony on the 24th of June at 8am. It was freezing, but a fantastic morning. And we had work start literally immediately after the sod turning. So as we were walking away, the diggers started digging. So groundwork is well underway and we have staff working with the community, looking at ways to make this facility the best it can possibly be and most useful for our communities. We have obviously a whole bunch of significant community issues, events and projects in the board area. These are just a few. So obviously the Bromley Oda issue, it has been recognised finally by Environment Canterbury as an issue. And this is a major step forward for residents and outlying communities that are affected by this. And we have site visits coming up next week, so people can attend and check out the facility and see how it works. So we are looking for some ways forward. This is obviously something that we'll need to keep progressing in order to get some real change in the area. We have the new Apawa Library opening. This is a really fantastic thing for the community. And that is on the 29th of August and it's actually being organised by the community. So excited for that, it's been a long time coming. We have our Wollstone Village upgrade. There is a lot of work going on in the area down Ferry Road. So we've got underground works happening at the moment. There's obviously going to be issues for businesses around the area, which we are taking very seriously. It is well sign marked around the area for parking. And we do have a really great comms team working with the businesses and within the community. So we are hoping that we won't have too many issues around that for that community. And just a reminder that all of those businesses are still open and we would love it if people use them. We also have the huge project of the Kiwi Rail Brom Street Bridge Replacement. This is a really large project and it will undoubtedly affect residents. But we're working with Fulton Hogan and Kiwi Rail to get some great community consultation. Unfortunately, we were supposed to be having a community get together to discuss this with Fulton Hogan and Kiwi Rail on the 19th, but that's had to be cancelled due to Covid. So we're hoping that that is kickstarted again very soon. And we have hotlines that have been set up for the community also. So yeah, just hoping that that all goes as smoothly as possible. And then just on to our community board plan. It was adopted on the 29th of June at our community board meeting. And that is all.
All right, thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? Okay, so can I have someone to move this report, please? Sarah, and seconded by Jake. All those in favour say aye. Against, that's carried.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much indeed, thank you. So now moving to the Waipapa, Papanui Innes Community Board. And Chair and Deputy Chair, welcome to the table.
Thank you for having us. And I've got Simon Britton, our Deputy Chair, with me today. We're just going to present sort of a few highlights from our report, which we're assuming you've all read. That picture there that you can see is the new Northlink Retail Park on Langdon's Road. That is, the parts of it opened last year and came out, which is the big drawcard for that one. That opened just after the level four, level three lockdown finished. It is causing issues with traffic in the area. We've got residential properties just right across the road from the retail park. And we have, well, we've been told a full assessment is being done of the network affected by the development. That's part of the resource consent process. So we've asked to be kept informed about the, the results of that as a board. Because we've had people, residents coming to us about the issues. And the issue is actually spread further down Langdon's Road to the Greas Road intersection and also right along to Northlands Mall, the roundabout there by the library and along Sisson Drive. If we move on to the next one.
So just further down Langdon's Road, in fact, is the Papanui Bush, which has been established over the course of the last few years with the support of council, council staff and a number of community groups. So we had a community weeding and planting day there on Aba Day on the 5th of June. We had the governance team, board members, park staff and a number of individuals and groups from the community there that day. And I also just want to acknowledge the work and support, especially of the Rotary Club of Papanui and Papanui High School who have been involved throughout that time. And the plants that were first planted there a few years ago now are really getting well established. So I'd invite councillors and public to visit and take a look.
And on to some more planting. This is Rutland Reserve, which actually neighbours Paparao Street School. And the school has taken on some projects in this reserve. There were springs that popped up in there after the earthquakes. And so there's wetland planting being done around there. And the school, the classes in the school have been sort of doing projects on improvements that they would like to see through the reserve. We, as a board, went and visited a couple of times last year and we heard about, you know, they've been researching a playground upgrade, the possibility of getting some beehives in there, community gardens, changing the name of the reserve and getting some signage and all that sort of thing. So it was really cool to see that. And they're taking their role as kaiakei of the reserve really seriously. So that's great to see. And also the partnership they've built with the park rangers and the council is great. Oh, this is Melvin Park on Innes Road, right beside Rugby Park there. It's been a project that's been a long time coming to get some fitness stations installed around the park. The council's been working with the St Albans Residence Association and the first of those stations has gone in right beside the playground. That's got four pieces of equipment, two of which are accessible items. And then, so that's the first station. And the second and third stations will be funded by the, fundraised and done by the Residence Association. So it's great to get that project underway.
The rebuild of the St Albans Community Centre is well underway now. At a recent board meeting, we had two staff from Health Based Solutions, which is the business formerly branded as Hardy and Thompson. So actually two of the Thompson family came along and presented us with a time capsule container that will be deposited in that building at the appropriate time through that building process. Hardy and Thompson are a long-established business in the area. They provided, in fact, the previous time capsule which was recovered when the building was demolished post earthquake. And council staff now have a process underway with community and local stakeholders to identify and select some suitable items to include in that container. It's been a piece of work underway to extend Belfast Cemetery. There's been additional plots established there in a children's area. During some of the construction work with an access road with that, there was a middon discovered which triggered a full archaeological investigation of that area, just to ensure that there wouldn't need downstream or in the future, there wouldn't need to be any archaeological work done with any internments or things that were happening there. So that process is all complete now and that work's been done.
And then finally, we've got the modular pump track at 10 Shirley Road. This has been a project which our staff have worked really hard on for the last couple of years. We originally got a petition from this boy here, you can see on the bike, asking for some sort of pump track in the Shirley. And so we now have this modular pump track. We weren't able to have the opening that we had planned due to Covid, but it was great. So once it was installed, we had got him down there and he was the first person to ride it. So that was very cool and he's, he was really chuffed. And it is really popular, it's right across the road from Shirley Primary School. So it's very, very busy after school and in the weekends. And that's it from us.
Great, all right, thank you. Well, great to see that pump track in place. I remember the decision-making on that some time ago, so good to, to see that happening. Moving to questions, Pauline.
Not so much a question, but I just want to actually reinforce what's happening here. I mean, we've seen the other boards presenting today too. What we're seeing is actually exactly what we want to see and that's all these community-led projects coming up from the community, like the Papanui Bush Project is community-led, Paparao Street School, it was their initiative. The Melvin Park Fitness Project came from the Residence Association. And Shannon came to us with his idea and he'd done the work around the petition and really pushed that one forward, bringing us ideas and also the willingness of the council to partner and use this energy and capture the energy and actually get really good outcomes for our community. And I'm really proud of the way our community board is supporting our community. We, our doors open, they come in and we pick these things up. And the way the council's partnering as well is exactly what we want to see. And we're seeing really good examples of really successful projects all morning today, so it's fantastic.
Great, thank you. James.
Kia ora, councillor Quata, of course, would say that about your community board, but I have a. Kia ora, councillor Quata, of course, would say that about your community board, but I have a genuine question and she may have partially answered it. How was that funded, that pump track?
That was through the Capital Endowment Fund.
Right, do you have any idea what that cost?
We can easily, if you don't know, we can easily find out.
I can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, I know that's, you know, I take my hat off to you. What was that?
About three hundred thousand.
Serious?
No, it's temporary, it's a temporary trip.
All right, let's, we can get some information back to you if we need to. Let's verify that and get some information sent around, that's fine. Yanni, you've got a question.
I was really concerned to see the traffic issues at Langdon's Road. And I just wanted to understand, why weren't they addressed as part of the consenting process?
That's an ongoing issue, our staff are liaising with the consenting team about that exact thing.
About the western minor effects.
Yeah, yeah, the, there are, the first two stages of the development are open now, there is a third stage. And as part of that third stage, there are meant to be lights put in at the Greas-Langdon intersection. So that, that will be happening in the future, but it's, I think the problems have spread further down the other end of Langdon's Road than maybe was it anticipated?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just aware of like, having been through this with Ferry Maid when Ferry Maid was put in. And I think there was a High Court case that was quite critical of council failing to look at the cumulative traffic impacts of these sorts of developments. So I wonder whether it would be helpful to get a report back to the appropriate council committee just to look at how consenting and traffic assessment is working. Because it does seem to me a huge problem where you've got such a huge development, creating all sorts of issues with traffic not being addressed as part of the consenting process.
So that's something that we'd be able to pick up through Mike's committing and it would be appropriate to do so. Let's, rather than asking for a report today, let's.
Also, just one other thing, we do have an audit underway of resource consents. So I wonder whether this could be one of those that gets put into that audit process. And it would be good to get, hear from staff, not today obviously, but to maybe get a memo about what's happening with that audit of the consents that we've already requested.
All right, let's, let's pick that up, let's pick both of those points up because they're, they're both good ones, thank you very much. And finally, Aaron.
Yeah, Emma, I think the process was in place here, it's just the modelling didn't match the success of the stores. So, but the traffic lights at the end, aren't they funded by the developer, once they're triggered? And that comes down to numbers, is that correct or not?
From my reading of the resource consent report, the report is silent on who is to fund them, it just says there's a requirement for them to be in place.
Because normally a development like this, the developer, if they trigger the upgrade, trigger the numbers, then they pay. Was that not written into the consent?
The staff are working through those issues.
All right, let's get some information back on that, rather than speculating, let's find out the facts on that and get them circulated. Yep, that'll be good, thank you. All right, so Pauline, you're happy to move this and somebody to second, James. All those in favour say aye, against, that's carried. So Emma and Simon, thank you very much indeed for joining us this morning and for your time, thank you. Okay, so our next community board, Te Pataka O Raka Houtu, the Banks Peninsula Community Board and Deputy Chair Tyron Fields, welcome to the table. And you're bringing apologies this morning from the Chair, Tori Pedden, as I understand it.
That is, that is correct. Thank you, Mr Chair. Tena Katoa Katoa, Te Hoat, Ko Teahu Pataki Timoka, Ko Fakarau Po Timarua, Ko Tyron Fields Tokuemura, Tena Kuaing, Mr Chair. So as I say, I'm tabling apologies from Tori Pedden, our board chair, she's convalescing from surgery, so I'm sure you'll join me in wishing her well as she gets back around the community board table. So it looks like I'm on, in charge of the technology.
We can run that from this end if you just let the team know when you want the slides moved on.
All good, that's fine, I know how to work a computer, I think, I think, I know how to work a button anyway. So first up, cruise ships. So as I hope you're all aware, so our board's, one of our huge priorities is a destination management plan to be developed for Banks Peninsula, it's right up the top of our, of our board plan. So, you know, it's, we're really dedicated to being able to manage the, the impacts of tourism broadly, but also, also cruise ships. You know, that's, you know, to support the economic wellbeing of the community, but also environmental impacts and of course the social licence to operate out there as well. So in terms of that, ECAN have recently made a determination in their coastal, regional coastal plan that allow, puts, essentially puts limits on the amount of seabed damage that ships can, can cause on the seabed floor in our harbours. So cruise ships have got about a year to be able to comply to the requirements there. Because at the moment, only about fifty percent of the ships that come into our harbours actually comply with, with those requirements. So, so we really want to be able to make sure that we look after, look after the seabed there. Just broadly, in Akaroa, we've had a really good, I mean, we don't know when cruise ships are going to be able to come back in the, in the numbers that they did. Obviously in Akaroa, things are going to be transferring to Littleton Harbour as the cruise ship terminal opens there. But obviously Covid has really put a kibosh on a lot of different, different aspects of that. But we want to plan ahead. So when the, you know, when things start to get back up and running again, we want to make sure that, that things are working really, really well. What we've seen in Akaroa is staff working together across different business lines and different business functions, working really well together to be able to deliver a good outcome for Akaroa. We want to be able to make sure that that sort of stuff can happen in Littleton, you know. It's about looking after the parks there, it's about installing Big Belly bins, can we have more of those please? Big Belly bins are a great thing. Toilet blocks, getting, you know, getting a renewed toilet block and even using the toilets at the Garty Theatre, they've really come into play. So, so when things do start to crank up in Littleton, we'd really want to be able to see the same kind of, of thing happening. You know, it's not, we're not asking for extra capital investment, it's really just about being organised and, and staff working together. So, so I'd love to see that happen. Next slide please. What have we got? Oh, Tira Community Park. Cool, so in June last year, council notified the community that of the intention to sell a couple of blocks of land over in beautiful Diamond Harbour. So over fifty residents of the local community got together and overwhelmingly supported retaining the land as open space and calling it Tira Community Park. So the friends of Tira Community Park were formed and they prepared a proposal to develop and maintain the land at no cost to the council. So in March, the community board resolved to approve the proposal, it was a no brainer for us. And the friends of Tira Community Park will take over the maintenance of the land and apply for funding grants to develop it. So the slide up there just shows the concept design of the park, including some plantings and recreational areas. And it'll be like a wonderful asset to the community there and it's just a really good example of, of the local community getting together and doing some good work. Next slide please. So improved infrastructure, so anybody who's been out onto the peninsula of late will hopefully have seen the, the two wonderful sets of toilets that have, that have recently been, been built over there, firstly in Cas Bay there. So it's an incredible asset for the, I mean, that's one of the really good places that people can interact with, with Fakarau Po Littleton Harbour. Kayakers, sailboarders, swimmers. So to have some really good, in fit for purpose toilets there is a, is a real win for the, not just for the community, but for all of Christchurch, for everyone who uses that area. And Stotap Point over at Diamond Harbour, so when you're all heading over to, to Diamond Harbour over the summer for the series of concerts and things that are going on over there, you'll be able to hopefully use the, the flash toilets that we've got over there as well. And, you know, the more flash toilets we can get on the peninsula, the better, particularly in Littleton to deal with, you know, when the cruise ships start coming again. Next slide please. Thank you. And just finishing off with, so the Naval Point project, that's, that's a really, a huge project for the whole city. I mean, that's the, the number one place where, you know, if you've got a boat, if you've got a, again, if you've got a sailboard, a yacht, that's where you really can launch it, connect with, with the sea and, and the harbour there. So as part of the ongoing process there, staff have been removing some of the damaged pontoons out of the water there. There's sort of detritus left over from the marina that was destroyed twenty years ago in a storm. And so they're finally coming out of the water and they're, you know, we don't want them in, in the water because they, you know, they damage the environment, they damage the water quality. And we're working very, very hard as a community and with some incredible work from Fakarau to Healthy Harbour Project to, to really get the water in Littleton Harbour as clean as possible. So, and ninety percent of the material taken from the harbour is expected to be recycled there. So, and that's, it's an important step in the development of, of Naval Point. And the development plan's due to go out for public consultation later this year, I'm led to believe. So, yeah, I was told to, to try and zhush up this report. I thought, you know, when it comes to the peninsula, everything's zhushi really, isn't it? So I hope you'll agree, but, but that's, that's me, Mr Chair, so happy to take any questions.
Great, Tyron, thanks very much indeed for the presentation and you've left us time for some questions. Are there any questions on the Banks Peninsula report? No, Aaron.
Yeah, Tyron, thank you for that and some great picks there. Just the word zhushi, is that the French word for expensive?
It's a technical term and it's a, it's a multilingual word for really damn good. Yeah, which I'm sure that, you know, everyone can be on board with.
Excellent, now I'm happy to move this report, would somebody be happy to second that? Sarah Templeton, all those in favour say aye, against, that's carried. Thank you very much indeed, thank you. So we've got two more community board reports to go, I propose to do both of those and then take a break. So the Waitei Coastal Burwood Community Board report to council. Kelly Barber, Chair of the Board, thank you for joining us, over to you.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Some assistance with the technology would be much appreciated, thank you. I'm glad you've shown that photo, it's probably one of the only photos in existence where I'm the tallest of the group. Oh, I don't think so, James, yeah, I think it's quite clear.
I'm sure there are facts here that we could verify after the meeting if we needed to.
Yeah, so we've had an, an interesting past few weeks, to put it mildly. Obviously, there's been the usual raft of approval of no stopping restrictions on a number of roads, et cetera. Want to bring down to the second point there, approval for the installation of a new pedestrian island and no stopping restrictions in New Brighton Road. Ordinarily, that wouldn't be something of much interest, but one of the new bridges, new footbridges across the Avon River is going to sort of end and then have a path going to New Brighton Road, so that's why that's been set up. So it just shows a little bit of the progress along there. We've allocated funding, obviously, through our DRF to a number of organisations recently. Another interesting, out of the ordinary situation is the revocation of a, an original decision, a previous decision around a bus stop. It came to the board, the residents who were going to speak to it were unable to come due to a family emergency. So we passed the resolution to, to have this bus stop come into being. But then in the meantime, they, the group contacted us and said, look, we really did want to come and speak, we had an emergency, can, can we come back? So we allowed them to come back, they spoke to their concerns, which was essentially around the bus stop being used so little, sort of three or four minutes in a twenty-four hour period. We thought it was a reasonable thing to, to leave the bus stop as it was with, with no yellow lines and essentially put a stop on the work. Unfortunately, the contractor didn't get the message, even though our staff passed it on, and that, those yellow lines went down. So we revoked that initial decision and the yellow lines were taken out. And, and I think it's a really, I'd really like to thank staff publicly for that. They were very patient with us because we made the original decision and then went back on it. But we got the best outcome for the residents and they really appreciated that. So I think it was a sensible, sensible situation. Another interesting situation again was the Christchurch Archery Club wanted to renew their lease in Rafiti Domain. They'd been there for quite some time and before that, Burwood Park. Initially, we were all in our sort of preamble talk in favour of it. However, after the hearings committee met and decided unanimously that, that, that should not be allowed but approved, we, we decided to follow through with that. There was a little bit of angst, I guess, in the media about that. But the situation is that the archery club were going to build a big new building in a public park. And I think that, you know, the residents, the local residents, were, were not supportive of taking down trees to allow it to happen. It was, it was an interesting decision for us, nobody wants to see the archery club go and in fact, they're not going, they can stick around. They've got a month by month lease, which we assume can go on ad nauseam, to give them time to look for, for another more suitable place. And, and we've been looking at areas for that too. Moving on to the next slide, you'll see this is Tetera Kahiku Hiku, which is the Red Zones Land Transformation Group. We have two members on this board and very pleased to have Joe Zervos and Bebe Fraley. We asked for an extra person because most of the red zone is, is in our area, so really appreciate that from council. Moving on to the next slide. So finally, our wonderful clock tower in New Brighton is restored and actually keeping time now, which is exciting for the locals. So, yeah, we really appreciate the work that's gone on there. And next slide please. And of course, the great success in the coastal and Burwood Ward of late has been Hepuna Timarua. So the, the hot pools have been absolutely fantastic. I think it's eight weeks since they've been open, they've been fully subscribed, almost every session, they have four sessions a day, an hour forty-five each with a sort of fifteen minutes for a, for a swap over. We've been really fortunate because of Covid in that it's allowed the locals to, to use the facilities. I'm sure if there had been a lot of tourists around, it would have made it harder for the locals, but it's, people have come from all over the place, including a couple who came from Timaru, didn't realise that there was a booking system. Can I have a little show of hands for people who've actually been to the hot pools yet? So Sarah, James, I know, Phil. So I would like to personally invite you all to come over to New Brighton and to try the hot pools, they're absolutely fantastic. I think you'll be blown away, you'll appreciate the investment that the council has put in over the years. And while you're there, have a wee walk around and have a look at the playground and how good it all looks with, with the streetscaping that's been done. The council's invested heavily, we're very grateful and there's a lot of good things happening there. And, and with the new resolutions that have been passed recently around the regeneration of the commercial core, I think we're going to see some real change in New Brighton over the next wee while. And of course, the government's announced funding for a number of projects that were, were on the go, so very positive. I guess last but not least is our community board plan. One of the things that we, that I would like to highlight is, one of our first priority was to make our place appealing and attractive for all. Our thinking is like, people feel good about the place that they live in, if it looks good, if it's tidy. And so we've been taking the lead on this as a community board, we've been going out and doing a bit of weed eating in safe areas. We've been on rubbish pickups, just the community board, just the five or six of us, whoever can make it. It's been good sort of bonding for our board and we feel like it's a good example, you know, to the community that if it's good enough for us to go and pick up rubbish and, and tidy up bits and pieces, safely of course, that it's good enough for everybody else. We've had good fellowship and good times doing that and, and it's been very positive for us. We've been to also a number of plantings, someone is always at one of the local plantings, that's also been a really positive thing. The other thing I'd like to highlight is the road and transportation links is one of our other priorities. Obviously, there's been a lot of talk about the flooding on Page's Road, I don't really want to give that a lot more oxygen than it's already had. But coming into places, as you drive into a place like New Brighton, it's, it's good if the place looks good and the roads are up to scratch. And I guess those are the things that we really want to focus on in the future, to make people feel good about, about the area they live in. And then just some of our other priorities, undertaking planning for a new community-led facility in Burwood Ward, that is accelerating incredibly quickly. Uh, it couldn't be more fortuitous timing for us. Um, yeah, so there's, there's work going on there. Um, the other thing, probably the most, um, used facility in the whole of the east, uh, is, um, Tiara Kui Two. Um, there's, when, when money is available, there's a couple of little tweaks that we would like to see, uh, disabled toilets and, uh, and a couple of other little, little things that, um, we understand, you know, that in the current financial situation that we need to be, uh, understanding about when those things might occur. Yeah. So all in all, that's about it for me. Any questions? If there's time.
That's great. Thank you very much indeed. Um, moving to questions. So Tim and then Aaron. Tim?
Thanks, Kelly. Um, I'm just thinking, it's probably more a question for staff because when we looked at, um, back to the hot pools, it was about tourism as well as the local community, which is the balance. We've got COVID nineteen, but local tourism with regards, you mentioned Timaru, but the rest of Christchurch. So in that booking system, we must be able to, to track where they are coming from, whether it's Peppanui or whatever it is. And can we relate that to if there is and shows an increase to the foot traffic in the mall in any way, shape? And I know that the mall has been a work in progress and a very, very long journey, but I think that would be very important for us to, to note that because one of the key things for the hot pools was its tourist element to boost the local economy. And we do need to keep that a reality there as well. So I'll just bring that up.
Yeah, no, I think that would be a really good thing if we could actually track where people were coming from. Um, you know, I guess it's just one question. It's the sort of thing that we could have a chat to Maren about who, uh, who runs the pool.
Well, we've got to remember as council, you know, the focus of why we do things and some of the reasons for it and follow those up. Because if we don't, then it's pointless doing it and we've lost our way.
So I'm going to ask you all again, if you've, uh, if you've come to the pools next time. So, uh, don't let me down. Come to the pools, have a look for yourselves.
I prefer the beach.
All right. Now, unfortunately that does leave us out of time for further questions. Um, but, um, Kelly, thanks very much indeed for the, um, presentation and for the call to action on visiting those hot, um, hot pools. So I need a mover for this one. Um, Phil will move, James will second. All those in favour say aye, against, that's carried. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
And then, um, last but certainly not least, we've got the Wymero Fendleton, Wymeri Harwood Community Board, um, and Chair of the Board, David Carter. Right. Welcome to the table.
Thank you. I appreciate that I am, I'm the only person standing between you and a cup of tea, so I won't take too long. Um, if I can have some IT support, that'd be great. Uh, so, um, great to be back at the chair and, uh, updating you on our news. On our first slide, you'll see that recently the Avon Head, um, Park Cemetery with, um, uh, through consultation with the community and the various, um, stakeholders within the cemetery, um, have elected to or have, um, resolved to change the name to the Avon Head Memorial Cemetery. So something we learnt through the process is that this is actually the first of the process. It now goes to the Department of Health, which have, um, the final sign off rights, I guess is how we would refer to it. Um, and on their approval, the name will be changed, um, timeframe unknown. Um, on our second slide, um, our community board plan, um, as you've heard from many other, uh, chairs today, uh, that's a process that we've worked with the staff and I must thank them for their input and their assistance and their guidance through the process. Um, and there will be some information to follow on that, um, coming forward. The next slide, Bishop Dale Green. Um, again, just picking up on councillor Cotter's, um, comments earlier around how the community get involved. This is a classic example within our ward. Um, that the, the local, um, people from the men's shed, uh, local businesses, uh, community groups have got heavily involved in sort of using a term here, zhusing up, um, uh, uh, that part of the, the Bishop Dale, um, mall area. Um, not expensive. It was, uh, a lot of the time and effort was all put in for free and, uh, some of the products. Um, on our next slide, uh, and just a quick thanks to the council, um, our Breen's Hereward Gardeners Road Intersection. Thank you for moving that forward. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions on this report? No questions. So can I have a mover? So James Gough will move, Sam McDonald will second. All those in favour say aye, against, that's carried.
Thank you. Have a great afternoon.
David, thank you very much indeed. Thank you. All right. So we'll now adjourn the meeting. Um, it's five past eleven. So why don't we adjourn till eleven twenty? That gives fifteen minutes, but we will start back on time at eleven twenty, um, with the part A East from the community boards. Thank you.
So we got enough people to recommence the meeting, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yep, we do, all right. And Yanni as well, yep, great. All right, thank you. So we're now moving to item fifteen, Rickett Road and Rata Street, the proposed speed limit changes. Are there any questions on this? Or was there anything that you wanted to tell us? The report's pretty self-explanatory. We've got a staff recommendation that was acceptable to the community board, so that's their recommendation as well. Nothing you needed to add?
No, I'm just taking the report as read, but I don't have to somehow add anything.
All right, so let's move to, let's move to questions. Are there any questions? So Jimmy, you're happy to move, and Catherine, happy to second. Yep, all right, so this has been moved, oh, Pauline.
Just a question, thank you, on the spokes' submission. And they suggested that the reduction zone expand to include Matipow and Clarence Street. Was that discussed at the board, as being a good idea? And Clarence Street. Okay. It's out of scope, really. Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you. So this has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Jimmy?
Yeah, yeah, because while in the Rickett Road and the surrounding area, in the South Park area, Russellam Street and Wilson Street, we are all aware, lots of the, you know, the passenger customer access to the Rickett Mall. But during the committee board meeting, they did have, you know, some part of the residential association, that particular maximization. If only the, you know, Rickett Road and the Wilson Street as well, Russell Street, you know, reduced to the thirty K. But if keep the local street, that's residential area, forty or fifty, probably lots of the drivers were shortcut along this one, you know. So that's why the committee board, just, you know, to support those kind of resident association. So all surrounding area, including Rata Street, Cowrie Street, Rimmer Street, all consistent those the speed limit, thirty kilometre. Just want to remind my fellow councillors aware of this issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, against, that's carried. And then next, moving to item sixteen, the dedication of road reserve as legal road. Are there any questions on this? No questions, so moved by Jimmy, seconded by Catherine. Any debate? All those in favour say aye, against, that's carried, thank you. And then now we need to elect a chair for this next item. Nomination for Tim Scandridge, who's a seconder, Melanie. All those, any further nominations? All those in favour of Tim assuming the chair, say aye, against, that's carried.
I'm just humbled by the support from my colleagues. Thank you, thank you very much for item seventeen. I'll take it as read. Are there any questions? I've just got one, which is, does it, on the picture on page one eight four, does it actually, is it landlocked? Or it does actually have a driveway, I'm just thinking. No, okay, oh, that's good. So do I have a mover and a seconder? Mover, Aaron, second, Anne? No discussion?
Yeah, it makes sense to dispose of this piece of land. The costs that come from running Banks Peninsula can be slightly offset by this.
There had to be a dig in there somewhere, thank you. And look, I just want to thank the community board for the pragmatism and just the logic behind this. And so I will, I'll put it up. All those in favour say aye, against, extensions, carried, thank you. And I will pass the chair back to the honourable.
Thank you very much indeed, Tim. Okay, now, item nineteen, the establishment of a coastal hazards working group. Okay, so if we can invite staff to the table for this one, please. And are there any comments that staff would like to make on this report before we move to questions?
Just briefly, we have completed the report on the question of elected members. You've got the terms of reference in front of you, we've canvassed those with elected members as well as the membership. There was a, since the report was drafted, a suggestion that Naitahu membership be included. And we've had some conversations with Naitahu, they are interested in putting forward some membership for it. The suggestion is, in recognition of the interests that sit within the city as well as Banks Peninsula, that two representatives are proposed for inclusion as opposed to one.
Thank you. Would it be helpful to add something to this resolution? To note the two members that have been suggested? So the fact that we have two members, one city-based, one Banks Peninsula-based?
Yeah, I think that would fit into the terms of reference which are attached at the back, so that would make sense.
So let's change then, resolution two.
So note that the chair has invited.
So note that the chair has invited to appoint two permanent members to the working group. Are there any questions for staff? Okay, so can I have a mover for these resolutions? Mike and a seconder, Pauline, is there any debate? So I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, against, that's carried, thank you. So next, item twenty, Christchurch Innovation Ecosystem. And Anna Elfick from Christchurch NZ is here to present this item. So Anna, thanks very much indeed for joining us, welcome. And yeah, let's start with any opening remarks that you might want to make on this report.
I wasn't planning to go through the reports in detail. There is quite a lot of detail there, if you hopefully have already gone through. Just in terms of the recommendations, we, the recommendations are that you receive the reports, that you agree to the findings of the evaluation of the Studio D4 Lighthouse submission, and that no further work is undertaken on that proposal. That you note that Christchurch NZ is already implementing the recommendations of the review. And Boyd Warren is here to answer any questions on the work that we're doing in that space. And request, and the fourth recommendation does request that Christchurch NZ considers the recommendations of the reports and its forward planning in the context of the LTP.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions? Okay, so would somebody like to move these recommendations? Melanie and Tim, so moved by Melanie, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favour say aye, against, that's carried, thank you. So now item twenty-one, the Christchurch Heritage Festival Community Grants. And again, we can take this report as read, quite self-explanatory. Were there any comments that staff wanted to make on the report before we move to questions?
I think just to speak to Covid and the latest situation and how that possibly could impact or affect the heritage festival. At this time, we are still hoping and planning to proceed. Fifty-five community groups, sets of volunteers, organisations have already registered an expression of interest. Nine have already come forwards with event plans that they want to propose to put in. The event planning process for any event to be included has to include a health and safety event in the event plan. This will nowadays include very, very detailed provision for mitigation around Covid issues. Implications that relate to that are things that staff will look at very carefully. No one can predict where we'll be on the twenty-fourth of October, but we still feel it's really important for those community groups and volunteers to move forwards with their planning and to hope of working towards there being a heritage festival and a chance to celebrate. Should things change, we'll roll with it and work with it. One thing I've learned over the years, I've worked with these community groups in heritage, they're incredibly adaptive, resilient, tenacious. If things change, they will change their events and we will help support them to find a way to do as much as we can online or by alternative means, so that the event in some form can still go ahead wherever we are and whatever's happening at that time.
Great, so given where we are at the moment, I think they're, you know, particularly timely and relevant comments. So the suggestion is, of course, that we would proceed as planned, realising that any changes to Covid alert levels would require changes to what's proposed. But clearly, there's quite a bit of flexibility that you're already thinking about there, anticipating, well, realising that we don't know what the world might look like in October. That's fine, thank you for that. Are there any questions? Tim?
Yeah, Victoria, thank you. And I totally agree with you at the process going forward, because some of these smaller groups, it's actually a really big workload for them to put these things through, so, and at timing and all that. So I think I might commend you on that, and whatever happens, happens, we've just got to roll with it, like you say. I'm just wondering, and I know they're small but amounts of money, but the result from it can actually be really big. So it is for the community understanding and expanding the knowledge of heritage, et cetera. So I'm just wondering, do you have a process of, you know, of visiting the events proposed? I mean, there are a lot of events, and I know you can only do, staff can only do so much, to get kind of feedback and see how some things roll better than others? Have you thought of that?
I'll let Deborah speak to this. We go to as many as we can, we get as much feedback. But there is actually a feedback process that Deborah can explain, whereby we ask the community event providers who have received funding to give us some feedback about how they felt it went, the comments they got back. So rather than us judging it from our council heritage perspective, we ask them to talk to the people who come to their events from their communities, what feedback they got and what they feel succeeded or not.
Cool.
Yep, so that is part of the process of accepting a grant, is that they fill in that report following the event. And we have sort of targeted questions about attendance and what went well, what didn't go so well. So we use it as a sort of a vehicle for learning, for going forward as well.
Thank you, I mean, as an old event organiser, I mean, you know, if I was asked to do my own, it's always a hundred percent and really full and, you know, but not to be negative, but I think if there's some way, a general way, maybe online, that people can feed back to our events, generally would be a really good way to forward, because obviously, as an event manager, you know, well, my events are always a hundred percent fantastic, so. But thank you a lot, really appreciate it, and really appreciate that you're saying, trying to get out to as many as possible. Time's valuable, you've got families, so really appreciate the work you're doing, cheers.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? All right, so I'm happy to move this. Do I have a seconder? Anne Gallowaine? Any debate? I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, against, that's carried, thank you.
I was just going to say how much.
Sorry, Anne, did I, did I miss him?
It's all right, I was just going to say how much we all appreciate your passion and the work that you do. Victoria came out the other day to our, our local community board dinner and talked about heritage in our community. And I think it really strengthens what's, it just encourages people so much, so thank you for, for your work.
Thank you for those comments, thank you. Now moving to item twenty-two, Lincoln Road Rights to Curlets Project. So this is detailing with the metropolitan significance and also the potential property purchase as well. So we've got the report in front of us. There's a further document been uploaded to the hub. And let's take some comments from staff on this report first.
Hello, further to the briefing that we had with council on Tuesday. The two topics, the two items to be discussed in the report today is, one, requesting that the Lincoln Road Rights to Curlets Project is declared metropolitan significance. And the second item is requesting that we can begin negotiation, begin discussions on potential property purchase that will be needed to deliver the project. Regarding the request for the project to be declared metropolitan significance, Lincoln Road borders on two community board areas, Spraden, Cashmere and Haweswell, Hornby, Ricketton. The Orange Bus Line runs from Haweswell through the centre of town and out to Parklands. And it can be affected by up to about twenty minutes with delays on Lincoln Road. and it can be affected by up to about 20 minutes with delays on Lincoln Road. Because of this, we're asking that the project be declared to have metropolitan significance so that the approvals process can be streamlined.
And the community boards are in agreement with that.
So we sought feedback from the two affected community boards in May of this year. Both community boards provided us with comments where they said that, yes, they agreed that the project did have metropolitan significance and they approved of the council's decision for it to be declared metropolitan. Regarding the property purchase, once we have a scheme approved, we are aware that there is the potential that there will be some properties that we will need to initiate discussions with them. There is a road widening designation along Lincoln Road that has been in place for about 30 years, and we just really would like to just check in with council and let them know that once we have a scheme, we would like to initiate those conversations with the affected landowners for property purchase.
Thank you, so this is obviously the beginning of that process, those discussions would take place. And then what does the other end of that process look like? Once the discussions, negotiations have taken place and agreements have been reached, what does decision-making look like at that point?
Sorry, for the property purchase?
For the property purchase, yeah.
Comes back to council, standard process for property purchase will be undertaken in that regard, but also throughout the process of the development of the scheme, we have committed to keeping both the boards and the council up to date on what these discussions are, so we will keep them up to date before anything's finalised.
And then a further decision paper would come back to council regarding the property purchase?
A further decision paper will come back to council.
All right, thank you. Are there any further questions? Melanie.
So it's about resolution for part C. That says that land purchase is designated, which it is, and that it will be purchased whether it's required for the design or not. So I understand that the negotiations need to start happening, but I'm not sure that I would agree with purchasing land if we don't necessarily require it for the design.
So that will be the case, and I, my suggestion is, you actually, we amend the notes from the, from resolution four, and amend note C to just say the land to be purchased. So the council notes that the land to be purchased is designated, full stop, and take the rest of it out. We are looking to, the point of the conversation with the landowners is to understand how much we need. My understanding, which I just received a few minutes ago, is that the landowner themselves could actually require us to purchase the whole amount of the designation. So there's sort of two parties in the conversation, but we will be having a conversation with all parties and we will only be looking to take what we need for the design and the scheme. But the scheme, again, going back to the start of this process, the scheme hasn't been finalised yet. So it's still quite a long way to go before we get to that point, so I would suggest that we amend that if it's acceptable with councillor Koka.
That's already been done, so that's obviously workable from your point of view with that wording, you can go ahead and do what you need to do. D below there seems to conflict with the answer that you just gave me to my question around what decision-making around the property purchase looks like.
So, and I'm, I've got part of that update. If they ask staff delegations, they will go with it, but we can actually commit to coming back and reporting back before we finalise any purchases.
David, have you got something to add here?
A number of these properties, we've been in negotiations for a number of years to actually get them, that's why we've purchased a whole pile, and I can actually bring it up on Canterbury Maps if you want, to see what we've purchased. So that basically, we still do need to get a open corridor. There are a couple of things that, if you have a look, the designation goes right through both sides and we are intending at this point not to purchase anything on the north side, I think from Domain Terrace to.
Okay, we probably don't, we probably don't need to go into the detail about the individual properties, but I'm just keen to understand the decision-making processes.
The reality is, is that the scheme process has to come back, and in order to understand what the scheme is and finalise the scheme design, we have to understand what property we need, so there will be feedback process into the council.
But there's no reason why staff could not have a delegation to purchase.
Well, it looks as though, according to this resolution, that staff already do have a delegation to purchase.
Leave that, and the rest of the scheme comes back to the Transport Committee, as per number two.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we haven't, we do have to come back and finalise the scheme. So I apologise to council, property purchase is not my part of the process and the property managers have been involved in this. We will be, as a project, we will be reporting back to the community board, we can take this offline and report back directly to the community board and council on what the details of this are, but the scheme is not finalised, so therefore we don't understand the detail of what we are likely to be purchasing. But we know the likely properties that are likely to be affected and we can start the discussions with them, but we don't want to.
And decision-making on the scheme of which the property purchases are a part will come to the Urban Development and Transport Committee, as per resolution two.
Yes.
All right, that's clear, thank you. Melanie.
So just to be clear, because this is what I guess I want to know, is will property be purchased before consultation happens on the design?
No, it's unlikely that that would happen.
So this is all a bit, because it's where the confusion.
We do have some of the property down there already, because we have a designation and we have an opportunity.
That's what I want to know, that we're not going to purchase it all, go out for consultation, not need half of it or something, and then.
We're not looking to do that at all.
Property has already begun some negotiations on, say, the more larger properties, and some of those discussions are underway.
We're not trying to preempt the final scheme.
I know, I'm just kidding.
Can we take it offline, sorry?
Can we bring this back there in a minute? The problem is that we've got some property purchases already about to be signed up. We've given briefs, we've talked to the people, we know that. If we then have to put it on hold and bring it all back and get your permission to do that out of the scheme.
No, I don't think that's what anybody's asking for. D notes that there are existing staffed delegations that'll be used to purchase the property. And we're, it seems that, you know, we're comfortable with that in as much as exists.
My understanding of councillor Koka's concern is that we go in and do a wholesale purchase. We are not looking to do that, we are looking to go in and buy what we need to allow the scheme and the objectives of the scheme to be achieved.
And Melanie, that's the undertaking that you're looking for, isn't it? Yeah, great, it looks as though the question, looks as though the question's been answered and the intent of it has been met. Yep, Jimmy.
Also follow this property project, if based on explanation, whether the four-point E we can delete is more flexible, because in here it looks like more, more definite. Because the C can replace E at this stage, am I right?
For councillor's clarity, A to E are noting provisions on the resolution. The resolution is acknowledging that we are having the discussions. We were trying to be upfront with council and let you know that we're going out to have the discussion, start the discussions in a slightly different timeframe to what we normally did. We're just trying to be very clear about what we're doing.
Yep, thank you, so I've got James and then Tim, James.
Kiara, thanks. Just want to clarify, Lynette, you mentioned that when the design is done with a scheme, I think you used that term, does that come back to here for consultation and/or sign-off? Is that what you said? Oh, to urban development, yeah, and transport.
So that's resolution two?
Yes, yes.
I just want to confirm, so.
So for sign-off.
Because I think you know where I'm going with that.
After consultation, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Thank you, Tim.
Look, with the clarification from you, Lynette, I'm more than happy to move this, I think it's been really clear. It's been on the cards for a long time. I think the concerns which Melanie has raised and from the other members of the board, I think you've answered, so I think it's clear and it's one of those things, as a board, we recognise it has to happen, it just has to happen responsibly and with respect, so I'm happy to move it.
Right, okay, now I've got further questions from Yani.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to check, when are we likely to get an overall scheme designed for the corridor? I'm just increasingly concerned that we're doing this piecemeal by piecemeal and we don't know what the big picture is, so when are we going to get a corridor plan for this area?
So the last round of consultation that went out for stage one of this project did give you an indication of the corridor plan for this, and the public has already seen that. So there is an indicative idea of what the scheme is likely to be along this corridor, so none of these conversations should be a surprise to anyone. We've already done it, so we can get that back out to you.
Yeah, why isn't that attached in this report? Because my understanding from this report.
This report is about the decision-making process, not the scheme.
So when the reports come back to the Urban Development and Transport Committee as outlined in resolution two, there'll be some contextual information around those reports that refers to the whole corridor and the actual decisions to be made for this piece of work in that context.
And that will be provided to the boards as well prior to that.
Thank you.
But why would you delegate rights to Curlets Road as an important project rather than the actual corridor?
Because the delegation, the other parts have already done and approved, so this is the only project that's done and it links with the NZU project that, the New Zealand Upgrade Project that NZTA are delivering from Haweswell into town.
Right, so we don't get decision-making over that one, that's NZTA, is it? From like, Wrights Road back up to Haweswell.
From Curlets Road.
Curlets Road, yeah. And just the other question I had, like, in terms of acquiring the land, if we choose to put in a mass rapid transit rather than a bus lane, does the property purchase or the designation enable us to use it for a wider VT solution rather than just buses?
So this, this report today is about decision-making responsibility for the project in front of you. Future options will be dealt with and Richard Osborne is giving the council a briefing on the PT futures business case in a few days, I believe. So there is other, that's another discussion to be had at a different time, I believe.
I was just interested, I guess, whether there was enough discretion in the property purchase to consider a thing like future mass rapid transit rather than just bus lanes?
So we've just advised councillor Koka and the rest of council that we are only looking to take what we need. I, we'll have to deal with the designation.
Let me, probably, I'll rephrase that. So if we're going through a property purchase.
No, there's no constraint, councillor, no.
The designation turns it to road reserve, so we can put it into whatever road reserve we can do. But I presume if we were going to put a train down there, it might be a different issue, but basically it makes it road reserve.
Yeah, I guess all I'm trying to understand is if we go, get to a situation where we want to put in mass rapid transit, whatever that might look like, we're not in a situation where we, A, haven't acquired enough land because we've only done it from bus priority, and B, that we have to sell it back to the owners because it's not for the purpose of which we acquired it. So the second one, I think you've answered, okay?
It's to be a, mass rapid transit may look like high-speed, high-volume bus lanes, which we're looking to put down there.
We're creating a transport corridor, what that's used for in future is a different matter than what we're creating.
That's exactly right.
But surely the design that we do, that informs the property purchase, will have a relevance to how much property we acquire?
And as we've stated, the design's not, the design's not done and it's not decided on. We are just beginning the discussions with the property owners and we are advising council of this.
Yeah, I mean, we need to, we need to remember that what we're doing is approving processes for this particular project. If there are future developments in the future, then that would result in further decision-making around that project, which is different than this project, and that may happen in this environment or it may happen in a completely different environment. And in fact, in, you know, a number of years' time, when those further decisions need to be made, the world may look quite different than it does now in terms of, you know, a number of moving parts, particularly the vehicles using the transport corridor.
And you're not even approving this project today, it's, you're approving the decision-making process for this project.
Exactly, I think it's important to remember what this paper's about and what it's not about. All right, Yani, anything further?
No, that's cool, I'll raise those concerns when it comes back to us in terms of the project rather than the process.
Thank you, thank you. All right, any further questions? Aaron.
Yeah, just a kind of a follow-on from the other day, and it was a follow-on from Yani's, just around the efficiency of bus lanes, we're going to get some numbers around that.
Yeah, we'll get you there.
And get them publicly facing, because if they are working and getting the people on board, then we need to sell that because that'll help in these processes and if it's not, then question what we're doing. So that'd be, and the other one was the finding that similar-sized city with a similar density that has a successful public transport system, I'm still looking forward to seeing.
Okay, we can look for that.
And whatever their model is, it could be completely different to ours, but it'd be good to see if it exists, thank you.
Thanks for that, we will get that back to you, and the community boards asked for that as well and we're committed to getting that information back to the community boards as well.
Awesome, thank you. Fantastic, thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Lynette. I feel, would it, I have to ask a question, not debate, would it be easier to buy out to the designation? Because if we get it all, and I understand what Melanie's saying, if we don't, and the boundary of the road reserve is going in and out for what people want to keep and what we don't want at the moment, we're better off to go from, because if we're going to relay services along that road when it's all done, it's always easier to do it straight at the moment, is that, would that be right?
Depends on the result of the design.
Yeah. We will normally buy to the designation and you'll see that. Because the line is straight. Five metres designation, there's a couple of complications, just about where buildings are located and car parks and things like that. And you may recall when we did Marshlands Road, we actually brought the whole property. We didn't have a designation, I don't think, in that case, but we had to buy the whole property because it went right, where we needed for the road went through the middle of a building, and then we sold the surplus that we needed. But generally, we will buy to the designation line.
So, okay, thank you, it's good. All right, thank you very much.
I'm just promoting to the council here that we are looking at the design and how we can minimise the impact on the community and we understand the trauma of putting these, for the community of putting these projects in, so.
All right, thank you. So, Tim, you're wanting to move this? Yeah, do I have a seconder? Pauline? So moved by Tim, seconded by Pauline, is there any discussion? Melanie.
So I'm supportive of bus transport and public transport in general. And the board is happy for this to go metropolitan, which is good. The issue that I had is that information we had been given in the last consultation, which was October 2018, was that some designated land would not be required. And I've just brought up the map here just to see how that looks compared to the designations. And what concerns me is it's not, I am concerned, basically, because it's not, it may affect some properties on the north side of the road. And I would support this, I'm in two minds, because I'm not quite sure what the design's going to look like. And if it looks like this design, then I wouldn't be able to support it. So I would hope that the council, if I was to vote for this, would vote differently to this proposed design so it doesn't affect one particular property that I've got in mind, because that would have negative consequences for it quite severely. So that's why I'm in two minds and I'm not actually sure how to vote.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Yeah, I did want to. Yeah, thank you, I totally agree with councillor Koka. I don't believe we should be approving this today. We need much more detail about the actual design and what the implications are for the properties. It seems to me that we've got this huge issue in Christchurch where we are so far behind when it comes to PT corridors. If you compare us to Wellington and Auckland, we just don't, we just seem to be going backwards all the time. And I think we're just really tinkering around the edges of a PT system that needs a lot better mass rapid transit. So I feel like disappointed that this corridor. So I, I feel like disappointed that this corridor, which would be a prime corridor for, whether it's light rail or other technologies, but we're just putting bus lanes in, which seems not to have made much of a difference in parts of the city. So, but my fundamental concern is that without seeing the design, I don't want to delegate or give staff the permission to go away and start doing property purchase until we actually know what property is needed because of the design. So, you know, I, I won't support this today. I think it is smart to designate and acquire property for PT corridors, but I think we need a much more joint-up approach than what we're seeing at the moment.
Tim?
You know, I just want to, just quickly, as the mover, you know, this has been a long time coming. The original concerns I had was with regards to the laning in the way through Limwood, sorry, through Addington Village. The council staff have done an excellent job on it. It's been really difficult because there's only so much you can do. But, you know, the, the horse has bolted, the development in the South West is huge. There's huge pressure on all the roads and all the communities, rat-running. If you go onto Google, you'll find ways through the community and the streets that should never have been kind of in there anyway is, is rat-running. So I think that the sooner this happens, the better. The sooner we see the design, I think, will be a good thing. And I just hope that we can move forward quickly, thank you.
So Pauline and then Sarah, Pauline?
Yeah, I, I'm just a bit confused by councillor Johansson's comments that I think this is actually going to provide a PT corridor. And I feel that this will not exclude any opportunity for a rapid mass transit corridor, should we go down that track in the future, excuse the pun. So I'm comfortable with this. I'm comfortable with delegating staff, the power to purchase property in light of the comments we've had in response to the questions, that this is going to be a careful process and we will only purchase what we need, et cetera. The design will come back to us, we have another option to oversee the design later on. So in light of those comments, I'm going to support this today.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you. I mean, the reality is that mass rapid transit is going to be essential in Christchurch's, greater Christchurch's future. But it's ideal for longer trips to slightly further distances like Rollaston, which may indeed end up going down Lincoln Road. But for Christchurch as a city our size, getting really, really good bus network underway with high-frequency and bus lanes is the biggest thing that we can do to boost public transport at the moment. The MRT business case is underway, but it's going to be some time. And getting underway with Lincoln Road and other projects is essential.
Anne, yes?
Yeah, the word was used by a colleague, disappointed. I feel disappointed that we've actually transgressed some of the things that we're meant to be focusing on here. And that's actually about our strategic priorities, our community outcomes. We want people to use public transport. This is the way to encourage it because buses will be better, faster and more efficient. And unfortunately, there is pain involved for some through this. But for the wider good, for the metropolitan city of Christchurch, this has to happen. And a huge amount of work has gone into the background, so please support this today.
Thank you. Yeah, at the end of the day, if we want to get people onto public transport, public transport needs to be frequent and reliable. I know when I get the bus in from Littleton, that's exactly the reason why I use it, because it's frequent, because it's reliable. And creation of a corridor to ease the difficulties that buses currently are facing with journey times is one way that we can achieve that. And by creating that corridor, yes, today that corridor might be for the use of buses. But the use of that corridor in future may be for something other than buses, and who knows what that might be. But the important part is creating a corridor that gives the benefits for today and gives us the flexibility that we need for, for tomorrow. But really what this is about is finding the balance between keeping traffic moving at the moment, particularly creating that reliability for the bus use and the bus timetables, future-proofing transport corridors for future use, and balancing all of that with the effects on communities. And I guess at the high level, you know, it's, it's trying to manage the relationship between getting people moving and having people living in the areas that they're moving through. And another thing that we often talk about in this chamber, the effects of cars and vehicles on people and how we can get the whole lot working side-by-side in the best way. So there are some challenges here. I'm encouraged by the answers that we've received to the questions that were asked this morning. Clearly, we'll be very interested in the more detailed work when it comes back and we look forward to that happening. But it's a process that needs to start. And in making these decisions today, we're allowing that to happen, so I'm, I'm supportive of this today. So I will put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Against? So Melanie is against. So against part four? Yep, so noting Melanie's objection to part four. And Aaron, were you against as well? Yep, so Aaron against just part four or the whole thing? The whole thing, all right. So just noting those votes, that's carried. Thank you. Yanni, did you vote against as you indicated?
Yeah, I did.
Yep, all right, so noting Yanni's vote against as well. Thank you. Sorry. All right, so now we come to item 23. The council parking building charges update in relation to the central city COVID-19 recovery. Comprehensive report in front of us, thank you very much indeed for the report. Any comments that you'd like to make as staff before we ask you some questions?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Good afternoon, councillors. Yes, well, council debated this matter at the end of May as a matter of urgency. The purpose of the initiative was for a review of parking charges in the central city, particularly councils' own two parking buildings in support of the return of footfall, visitors, shoppers to the central city in the light of the COVID-19 emergency. So the purpose of it really, as our understanding was at the time, was by providing some reduction in parking charges in two councils' parking buildings, could that bring footfall and visitors back to a similar level to what had been achieved pre-COVID-19? The, the report in front of you today was as a resolution of that May meeting where councillors asked for an update on the costs of this initiative and, and also the, the effective uptake of it. The results we have before you today are obviously only partial because the initiative does cease under an existing resolution on the 31st of this month. So this is our last opportunity to update you on how this looks before the current initiative ceases. So that is the recommendation in front of you this morning. Interestingly, if you look at the results, that if, if one accepts that it's difficult to determine what proportion of the return footfall to the central city has been due to this, but actually the number of parking events in councils' two parking buildings during June and July of this year as compared with June and July of 2019 is slightly up. And actually, if we drill into those figures a little bit more, visitors didn't return in the same numbers in June when this initiative first started. In fact, the June numbers were down on 2019. But the July numbers were in fact up by about 18% in terms of parkers between this July 20 and July 2019. So effectively, the longer the initiative went on, and except it's only for the first eight weeks, it does appear to have been increasingly successful in terms of the number of visitors using the two council parking buildings. Again, back in May, we were only able to estimate for council what we expected to be the likely costs of this in terms of foregone revenue to council from that first hour free. And, and so really to, to try and ground truth that the best we could do was to compare the actual revenue we received from those two buildings in June and July of last year with what we actually received in June and July of this year. And we estimated for council at the time it was probably going to be about $100,000 per month, the cost of this. And over the two months, it has actually cost about $195,000 in lost revenue. The lost revenue was lower in July because of that increased usage of the two buildings than June. And so it's possible it could be less than the $300,000 over the three months. So as we, we are here today, the alternative option before council this morning, whilst the recommendation is for it to cease as per the extant resolution at the end of this month, the alternative option before council is for this to continue for a further three months. And on the basis of the financial information we have before us at the moment, our expectation is it would still be circa $100,000 per month. And so a 0.06% impact on rates. Were council to consider that three-month extension? Why three months? Because as I think the graph on page 313 indicates, if 2020 follows 2019 and we get a, an uptick in revenue and spend in the central city pre-Christmas as we move into the December period, then if 2020 broadly follows other years, then we would probably expect an increase in footfall and revenue anyway beyond the end of November. So that's not the recommendation in the report. But it is, we've put information in the report for councillors this morning so that you can consider whether you would wish to extend the, the offer further. It's our understanding that the Central City Business Association would, of course, favour this being extended as they made a very strong plea for that back in May. But obviously, because of the short period of time we've been able to monitor this, it's been, it's been difficult for us to have a clear view as to what effect this has. Thank you, Mr Jim.
All right, thank you. So dealing with questions first, are there any questions? James?
Thanks for that. Does, does a change in thinking, or has a change in thinking occurred in light of recent events with the resurgence of COVID, Edwina?
Through you, Mr Chairman. As we indicated in the report, the, the report was prepared two weeks ago. And, and as we said at, at one point in the report, we, of course, didn't know whether the country may return to a different level of COVID during any extension of this. And so obviously, this was prepared prior to this week's government announcement. And, and clearly, it is a pertinent issue before us today. But, yeah, we, we really can't provide, offer any more advice around how council may react to that.
No, I appreciate that. There's a lot of unknowns there. If I may, through you, Mr Chair, just a couple more.
Yep, please do.
The increase in parking numbers, I know it's difficult. But is an increase in parking numbers really the only measure of success that you can quantify this by?
It, it's, that and the costs of it to council are the only measures we can place around the parking aspect of this. As we tried to outline in the May report and is repeated in today's report, it's a complex picture. We're changing lots of things, people's behaviour is changing. And so, yeah, parking is one part of a very complex decision when people come into the central city. The other thing I think it's perhaps important to recognise, which we've also outlined in the report, is we do not know whether the first hour free parking offer in town, two councils' two parking buildings may in some way be due to people diverting that parking event from other privately owned and controlled parking buildings. So we've tried to be fair around that. We don't know what effect that may have had. But this may not be a net increase in parkers. It may just be a net increase in parkers in councils' parking buildings that may be replicated by reduction elsewhere, perhaps. We just do not know.
And I guess, again, if I may, Mr Chair, wouldn't, would an extension, just depending on how this goes, I'm interested in just seeing where the discussion goes. But would it be workable hypothetically to extend one and not the other as an IE? Litchfield, perhaps, given its proximity to the hospitals and retail, which is probably the most affected industries by COVID. Extend one of those and perhaps not art gallery to even a more logical date, say 31 December 2020? Would staff have any practical objections there?
It's perhaps around the effectiveness on central city footfall and retail spend. This was our understanding of, of the purpose around the original initiative. The parking capacity in those both buildings, those two buildings is very different. 33 Litchfield Street is 806 spaces, the art gallery is, I think, 110. And so the revenue figures and the parking numbers are disproportionately very different across the two buildings. So the, the, you know, the revenue proportionally in July, July of this year, for instance, was, Litchfield Street was $160,000 revenue, lost, lost revenue there. Sorry, revenue there. And the revenue in the art gallery was $22,000. So 22,000 plays 160,000, so it's a very different issue. I, I suspect the art gallery is, is a much smaller effect on the overall picture.
And there's, there's nothing, you know, no systems or anything that would prevent us from doing that. It's just, yeah, we can practically do it. It's just probably the most difficult thing would be how that's communicated and if that causes any confusion. But given that there's other car parking buildings around the city that don't do it, then, yeah, it should be up to me.
Okay, well, that actually just prompts one final question. Thank you for indulging me with the questions here, Andrew. But finally, interesting around the June numbers not being substantially up, but then more of a jump in July. What sort of marketing was undertaken around this? Was it reasonably substantial, was it largely word of mouth? So, i.e. you think that perhaps people then going in there and being pleasantly surprised that there is free parking may have then been one of the most effective ways of marketing the promotion?
I mean, the initiative was very clear through council's website. I think it was reasonably well-understood that council had made this offer available, but because other things were happening in July. Christchurch's lit event was during July, it wasn't during June. And so as I said earlier, you know, there were other things changing. So it's, it's very difficult for us to be sure what effect the parking offer has had on footfall, parking usage and a number of other factors. I think the only thing we can be reasonably clear about is that it has had some level of support of returning the footfall.
I'm sorry, that was my fault, it was poorly worded. A better question is what marketing did we deal around to the promotion?
Primarily, I think, through council's website. And obviously, when you entered the building, it's very clear that their first hour is free. And, and obviously, this was around returning visitors. And so once you've gone in there once and you know it's first hour free until the end of August, well, then that may have an influence over where you choose to park on a subsequent visit to the central city.
Correct, that's helpful, thank you.
Thank you. If this were to be extended, and we can see the costs in the paper, what budget would be used to cover that?
So it would come out of, obviously, the, the revenue that council anticipates to get from parking. So that's within the transport unit. So revenue comes in from parking, it offsets other costs, so it does have an impact on what we can spend, I suppose, as council.
Yeah, so it would be reduced revenue.
Yes.
And that would then impact transport projects which were able to be delivered as a result of that reduced revenue?
It's, it's just part of the big picture in terms of transport OpEx budgets. So there's, there's an element of the revenue that comes in, but there's also what we spend. So it effectively offsets that budget. So take away that bit of revenue, then that means what can be spent is less if you...
And what would that typically be spent on?
There's a, there's a range, so within, all the OpEx within, within transport. So I've got things like some of the road landscape maintenance, some of the road maintenance, graffiti removal. Obviously, they're all OpEx elements that this offsets. Not directly, but within the, the overall transport. Not directly, but within the, the overall transport units OpEx budget.
All right. Thank you. Sarah.
Thank you very much. I'm just the, the graph there on page three one three with the weekly total spending. I think it's quite good to look at not just the post-Covid time where we've had this particular free parking, but in relation to the time pre-Covid where we didn't have the free parking. And the difference between the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty spend is really similar for all of those and probably due to things like Riverside opening. If we did that tiny little uptake uptick in, in July that looks a little bit wider, that's not a lot of additional spending in the city, for example, for those extra cars. Does that show that either people is generally just few, sorry, people are either coming in by different modes and, or people are spending more in each trip for the people who were coming in. Is that right? If there's not a greater number of cars coming in, then either people are coming in by different methods or spending more per trip.
Well, I guess what we don't know is the impact of that Covid would have had on those numbers. So if you look at the, the, the post-Covid numbers, then you're right, they're looking very similar to the pre-Covid numbers.
Yeah.
But the, the, the.
It was a bit of a rebound, spending rebound.
But also if we hadn't done this, what we don't know is if, was, would that have been the same or would that have been lower? And I guess that's part of the problem. We always seem to find ourselves in with.
Hard to get a baseline.
Yeah, yeah. Because we initially we did first hour free immediately when the, that building opened, well, the main built, Litchfield Street building opened. And then we've done this again after, after this event. So it's very, so it's always a little bit difficult to compare. So I guess that's why I've taken the approach of trying to, trying to compare it to the previous year.
So it seems odd to me that we're focusing on transport as a way of getting people into town rather than focusing on the activities that people would do when they get here. So as a way to incentivise people to come into town and spend money instead of giving free parking only in two parking buildings rather than all of them, for example, because we can't do that. Would it be better to not use transport funding and transport stuff, but to focus on the activities that people do and maybe, for example, like if we gave away or worked with businesses and did five thou, five thousand free coffees in all the restaurants and cafes and things, that would only be twenty five thousand dollars. And we could do that over three months. And that's five thousand extra people coming in. You give them to people who wouldn't normally come to town. Or a ten thousand dollar a month prize draw, work with businesses. And that wouldn't come out of transport stuff. That would be part of our, our urban kind of team or something like that. And you could run a competition, three months, ten thousand dollars a month prize draw. Enter at a business when you've spent money, all goes into the pot. Those kind of things would potentially have more impact and service everyone rather than just the few people who park in our car parking buildings. Hard to tell, right?
Thank, through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I mean, really that's discussed in five seven and five eight of the report that there may be other things council could do that would be as effective, if not more effective, to encourage people to come back to the central city. Some examples are quoted there. That's not exhaustive. But as, as you say councillor, that, that those other initiatives are not principally transport initiatives. They are for other wider initiatives. And, and really those were discussed in the earlier report. And other initiatives were considered when council ceased the earlier offer back in twenty eighteen, I think, is that there were perhaps other more effective things council could do to encourage people into the central city than to focus on parking charges.
Yeah. And maybe that's something that the Central City Momentum, you know, working group could pick up.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, we, we just can't give you any more advice from the transport.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you're here from a transport viewpoint and, and that's well understood. That's, that's fine. So further questions, I've got Sam and then Aaron. Sam.
Just a quick one. Do we have a view, and apologies if I missed it, on people coming in, staying for the hour free and then staying on further in terms of revenue, revenue generation? How, how did that play out over the period?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. The, the, the only sort of information we have is we have the duration of stays in the, the two buildings. And probably look at, looking at Litchfield Street, which is the bigger, you know, obviously the much bigger building of the two. In June of twenty nineteen, the average duration of excluding all day parkers. So this is primarily the short stay events, which is what this was targeted at. The average duration of stay then was about two hours, just over two hours, two point oh six. In June of twenty, that had dropped, that had dropped to one point seven one, but that, that, you know, so the duration of stay had actually reduced. In comparing the two July figures, again, July twenty nineteen was two hours. The average duration in July twenty was one point seven eight hours. So the duration didn't hold up. It didn't, doesn't appear on the basis of those figures. And we accept they're not comprehensive. But on the basis of that, there's, we, we can't advise you that the parking offer seems to have increased the duration of stay.
So, okay, could, could you argue then that twenty nineteen, a normal year, twenty twenty Covid issues? And we, obviously we can't get that baseline to know for sure. But there is potential that within that hour of free parking, we've actually gained an additional point seven of revenue that we may not have otherwise received because of Covid?
Yeah, I.
Or it makes sense though.
The information before, if, if the duration is reduced in both cases, then I think it's hard to draw the conclusion that we're making additional revenue because people are staying longer because we've given them the first hour.
What, what I'm saying is that there's an incentive to actually go and use it. Therefore, because they're staying over the hour, we're getting revenue that we, we would be getting rather than no one using it at all.
Again, as I say, that there is also the unknown effect on other parking buildings. So it, we are drawing a really long bow on the, on the data. What we don't, what we, we can be reasonably sure of is that this action on its own does not appear to be encouraging people to stay slightly longer in the buildings.
Just one other. So have we talked to other car parking providers in the city in terms of where their demand is currently at for the non-leased portions?
One of the difficulties we have is that we can't discuss our operations with other car parking builders. We, we, although I guess we, we see them as partners and providing parking to the, to the, to the reasons of Christchurch, they see us as competition. That's how the Commerce Commission sees it as well. So we have to be really careful about the conversations we have. In fact, we have to sort of steer clear of conversations around.
Right. So then is it fair to say we'd never know the effect? We, we're saying in some places we can't judge the effect, but what you're saying is we'll never know the effect.
The, the, the only effect we can be reasonably sure of is reflecting their views on previous offers, which is in the report here, where there is some concern that we, because the public parking is delivered as a system shared between council and private building owners. There is an understandable concern that obviously if council takes a different approach to pricing in its parking buildings, it does have an effect on both the usage and the pricing policies of third pa, third party buildings. And so it is a complex relationship and we just need to be aware of that.
Thank you. So I've got Aaron and then Pauline.
Yeah, yeah, there was, I mean, you could read almost anything into this because the baseline is almost an argument. You can take the baseline back to zero because you shut the entire economy right down. And there was no paid parking in town at all. So the, the, the modeling, you, you could never be accurate. And you've kind of said that. But I thought the reason why we were targeting parking rather than doing giveaways and stuff is that the overwhelming feedback year after year, pretty much since the quakes, has been accessibility to the city and parking. So that's what the public have told us multiple times. It's one of their blocks, blocks to coming in was.
I think in terms of the effect of parking on visitors to the central city, well, the only, the only thing we know is that the, the retail spend has gone up compared with twenty nineteen from the figures. The usage of our two buildings has gone up from twenty nineteen, albeit marginally. But if we go back to the end of May, none of that was certain. We, the, the fact that we've achieved greater numbers in twenty twenty, post-Covid lockdown than we had in twenty nineteen could be taken as a measure of success. We don't know what proportion of the success has been due to this. But the basic objective of getting people to come back to the central city appears to have been achieved.
Oh, yeah. And to still have that spend up above mirroring a similar line to pre-Covid and, and for July there, better. When several thousand people in Canterbury have been laid off, I think's remarkable success. So then that leads me to the prospects into spring in there. And it says, in looking ahead over the coming months, September will be a critical period. During this month, the government wage subsidy will be gone and the various commercial rent reductions will run out. So, but it's therefore important that the spending pipeline is supported. So that wording would make me think that this, this supports the spending pipeline. Taking more money off people to park doesn't support this spending pipeline.
The report recommendation is clear, Mr. Chairman, that, that the offer ceases on the thirty first of August. But in, in response to the CCBA submission back in May and the discussion around these issues by council back in May, we felt it was appropriate that we should outline for council some of the checks and balances around this offer ceasing on the thirty first of August. And they will be around those issues. And we understand the uncertainty that exists out there and particularly this week.
Yeah, yeah. Because this week, you know, Tuesday's events have sent a shockwave through the, through the economy again. And hopefully it's just a shutter and it's all over by Friday midnight. But it might not be. But even still, there's damage done in the three days. And to also take out the wage subsidy and put the rents up and take out the free parking just starts to look like a perfect storm. All coming in in the same couple of week period.
Thank you. Pauline.
Yeah, thank you. You just on Aaron's question about the availability of parking in the central city. I think that it's a perception because there is actually a lot of car parking. Is that correct?
Yeah. So in terms of the, you'll see some different numbers that are, that are spread around. But personally, I think the key one is the, the number of car parks that are publicly available to people to come in at any time and go wherever they want. That's around fifteen thousand. So it's currently around fifteen thousand of those car parks. Pre-quake, there was a little bit less than that. It was around fourteen thousand. And the demand for those is around ten thousand. So around, obviously within that, there's some hotspots. But, but there's, if someone wants to go, come into the city and go to park somewhere and go wherever they want from their car park, there's about fifteen thousand car parks.
That's right. And one of the reasons I think we adopted this too, apart from trying to attract people and to support the businesses, was actually to raise awareness and, and, and encourage people to use the buildings because there was a certain resistance post-earthquake. But to get to my question, if we were to support the staff recommendation today and cease this, would there be a big cost to revisit this if we had the mind to, to bring it in for the period of the month of December? And my second question is if that was viable and we did support that, would that actually be a point oh two percent cost of rates?
The, 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 the cost of reinstating it is, is pretty much as per the estimates in the report. Our best information at the moment is that it would be circa a hundred thousand dollars in foregone revenue per month for council to reintroduce this as per the existing offer in its two parking buildings. I think probably the graph on in the centre of the report that looks at revenue would tend to suggest that perhaps the offer applying in December would be less helpful for turnover and revenue than it was in other months. Simply because more people will come in for shopping and activities anyway.
Because actually that's true because we actually brought this in as a winter stimulus as well, didn't we?
Absolutely.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's clear.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions? Mike.
Thank you. You spoke about fifteen thousand publicly available car parks. I'm assuming that would be both on-street and off-street car parks. And the rough number for our city councils, off-streets, around nine hundred and under seven thousand on-street. Do we know how many of the, I guess, the on-street car parks are free car parks?
We do, but I don't have the information. That's me, unfortunately.
But it's, it is considerable, isn't it?
Yes. I think the most proportion, the higher proportion is unpaid.
Yeah, majority is, is basically free car parking. Yeah, thank you.
The, the other, the other piece of information I see around is around that thirty five, thirty six thousand car parks. Basically, that takes into account the privately owned ones that, hey, like say, Pack and Save Car Park or South City where you have to go. And if you don't go there, you may get Covid or something like that.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any further questions? All right. So Sarah, you'd like to move this. Do I have a second, Mike? So moved Sarah, seconded Mike. Is there any debate? So James, Melanie. James.
The reason why I've just piped up now is because I, I think I'd like to put an amendment forward, but I, I thought that there was some fair recommendations there, so it might be the best way to go if I just speak first on that. I can send the wording through to Samantha. So it's what I'm talking now. So I'll do a poor job of multitasking while I do that and read it at the same time as I'm sending it. And that's the council, A, confirms the termination of the current first hour free parking at the council's Art Gallery Parking Building at midnight on thirty one August twenty twenty. So first one's in keeping entirely with staff. And B, extends the first hour parking offer at council's thirty three Litchfield Street Parking Building until midnight on thirty one December twenty twenty. Rationale around that is, look, I, I don't see this as about bringing in more cars. I, I don't think that bringing in more cars is actually the goal, counterintuitively enough. For, for me, it's really about the message that you send and it feels like the right thing to do. My thinking has changed a bit more around this. I've been more convinced to go down this path of proposing this amendment really as a result of what's occurred over the last couple of days. It's just reminded all of us that we live in incredibly uncertain times. And one thing that we do know is that the hospitality and retail sector are probably one of the hardest hit sectors as a result of Covid. And the central city is based pretty significantly and made up of those, those sorts of businesses. So I think in light of some very uncertain times ahead of us, that this could be the right thing to do. Ductailing this all the way through to the end of the year, ties into Christmas, it keeps it simple. We've seen that chopping and changing hasn't been overly workable and, and can confuse people. So I think we keep it really simple. I think we say, we live in uncertain times and we will have first hour free parking in the central city Litchfield Street Car Park Building only through to the end of the year. Like I said, I, I don't see the success though being necessarily that there's more cars coming into the city. It's just that the right signal to send for something that consistently ranks as a real bugbear for people. Going forward too, there might be a lot of fear around going to malls. And you can capitalise on that and try and bump up the prices here. But I think actually this could be a coup for a central city because it is a, a lot more open, I think, as far as open space and social distancing, distancing is easier to achieve. So I just think it feels like the right thing to do in very uncertain times and will benefit those businesses who are going to be most, most affected as a result of Covid. The only other thing I'd say too is I actually agree with the comment that was made that it could be more effective to have prizes, shopping vouchers, all that sort of stuff. But the fact of the matter is, it's not on the agenda right now. I see this as low hanging fruit for something that feels like the right thing to do. It's clean, it's simple, it's tailored, and I think it's, it's timely in light of what's, what's been going on over the last couple of days. So hopefully I might be seconded and, and we'll test that if we may.
I I I don't think it's there.
Yeah, if we can get an answer on that, I mean, I was I was gonna be happy to take it as amendment, but if there is some advice that suggests I shouldn't. All right, let's get some advice from you. Do you want to come to the um table? We might need to, yeah.
No, I think I think that's okay, the proposed amendment.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it it amends the substantive set of resolutions with a a different outcome for Litchfield Street and the same outcome for the art gallery. Okay, so um Sam, you're having a second, so we've got an amendment moved by James, um, seconded by Sam. Um, so let's deal with the amendment first. Um, does anybody wish to speak to this amendment? Sarah.
Thank you. As we've seen um over recent months, basing decisions on sound evidence is really important for a range of things. And as a council, basing our decisions on evidence presented to us um when it comes to spending ratepayers' money, I think is really, really important. We don't have any evidence that free parking works to bring people back into town and to get them to spend more money. And so I think that being a really efficient, lean, cutting our cloth kind of style council um means that we should be, means that we should be um uh being really clear about this. If we had evidence that it was the free parking working and not and not other things, then I'd be happy to support it. But as we know, Christchurch N Z did a huge campaign about buying local and getting people back into town. Um, and I have a feeling that that's what drove people back, as well as the not people, people not wanting to be in malls so much post Covid. Um, so I think that in the light of the fact that as a council, we need to cut our cloth, um, we need to be really wise with ratepayers' money. I think that taking from our transport budget to do this is a really poor choice.
Thank you. I've got um Tim, Aaron and Anne. Tim.
Thank you. I'm gonna support this. I think I'm being close to an industry or industries that are really sweating at the moment and are really um very worried. But it's it's about sending a message of support to these industries as well. So I'm fully supporting Jamie. I think it's a really good move. Thank you.
Um, Aaron.
Yeah, he's one of those councillors that loves to listen to people who whinge. Um, and uh there's plenty of them in the city. Uh, because they seem to have plenty to whinge about. Um, one of the big ones uh over the rebuild of the city has been accessibility and has been parking. So um it's it's brought up, and unless you never talk to anyone, you wouldn't have had it brought up with you. But if you've ever had a conversation with members of the public, they always bring up parking. Um, people don't like paying to park when they can go to shopping malls uh with the nice eco units and everything else, all uh humming away well planned um for a shopping experience. Uh, I think the inner-city shopping experience is a fantastic one, and we need to encourage people to come and not put them off uh by the charging to park. So um I do support the amendment. But I just want to draw everyone's attention to six point eight in the report, accessibility considerations. The alternative option in this report to continue the current, no, for a further three months or to support the amendment, I think it meant to say, is consistent with enabling good access to two central city car park buildings, so let's just change that to one control. And therefore is helpful for people with mobility impairments. So everyone at this table that wants to support those in our community with disability or mobility impairments, you'll vote in support of this amendment. For those of you that um want to penalize them and take money off their already reduced incomes um because they paid a third lesson, everyone else, you can vote that way as well.
Thank you. Um, Anne.
Thank you. I won't be supporting the amendment or the substantive actually. But um I think that uh our basic objective here is to get people into the city. And it seems, it feels to me like um council has been given the full responsibility of this. And this is a a very tiny way to address this, uh, this, what we're doing. We've got um a C C B A and we've got other groups very active in the central city. I would like to encourage, as as Sarah has suggested, a very creative uh view of how to bring people in that isn't just about lowering the cost of of parking. There are other things that can be done, for example, example, changing the hours of retail being opening, uh being opened, which um should be considered. Um, so I think that uh putting the responsibility of bringing people into town solely on the council's shoulders, as it seems to be in this case, is is not a fair thing to do. It belongs to all of us to to make this uh central city vital.
Thank you. Pauline.
Just look, I won't be, I won't be supporting the amendment. Um, I agree with um Sarah that there is, there is no real evidence to show that this is working. And I think that um we do have to take into account the level playing field lens on this, that we can't really be seen, we shouldn't be seen as actually undercutting other private investments in their, in their own car parking buildings. Um, so, and we've also had evident or response from staff to say, actually, the summer months are really not the best time to be doing this. We brought this in as a winter incentive, and I think we should stick to our guns on it. So I won't be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Catherine.
I'll be supporting the amendment today. And I completely agree that there are other initiatives and other campaigns that work better to drive people into the city. But I think more often than not, we see people being not encouraged to come into the city because they see um parking costs in town as a as a roadblock to them. So I think this is a really good chance for um us to send a good message to people that um we are welcome being able to encourage people to buy local and buy in the city and encourage the economy in the inner cities. I'll be, I'll be supporting this amendment.
Thank you. Sam. Um, I'd come back to James to close as the mover of the amendment. Um, so I'll go Sam. All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, so I won't in that case. That's fine. So Sam and then Phil, Sam.
And look, I I can be brief, and I'll be obviously supporting the amendment. I thought it was really interesting Sarah saying that we should be cutting our cloth. I just, you know, really wonder where you were two weeks ago when we signed off a three point eight percent rate rise, but we can come back to that. And in terms of, I guess, an evidence-based decision, we've got one word, which is glyphosate. The the other thing is, the thing that really stood out for me was around, um, I think the fact that we have an opportunity to actually generate revenue for the council from this. The reality is, we don't know the baseline, which staff have confirmed. We don't know what's happening within private car parking facilities. Uh, we know that the average duration is one point seven hours. We give them the first hour free, we get another point seven. So I see this as a real benefit, and we should run it through to the end of the year. So I'd encourage councillors to support it.
Phil. Hi, guys. Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to support this. Um, we've got another eleven minutes, and we might find out from our illustrious leader if we're sadly in level three down here, which will be something we don't want to go anywhere near. Um, I I agree with James that the um art gallery car park is neither here nor there, it's such a small amount. And if we can bring people uh sort of buy into it a bit and bring people, help people get into the hospo area, that would be good.
All right, thank you. Um. Yes.
If this passes. There's still a substantive.
Yeah, absolutely.
But if the substantive fails, the substantive was only a confirming or an otherwise, does the original decision just to end it still stand? If we don't end up passing.
Yeah, it's a good question. Because if this amendment passes, it then amends the.
Because we've already got.
It then amends the.
Council resolution to close it.
Once you put the amendment and let's say that it's passed, then that becomes a substantive on the motion that you then vote on.
If that was then to fail.
If that was to fail, then it fails the.
So what would happen then?
Council resolution to stop it.
The original purpose of the um extent of the um rebate finishes on the thirty first of August.
So it would finish on the thirty first of August in the absence of a decision from this meeting today?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, thank you. All right. Is there anybody else wanting to speak? Yanni.
Yeah, I did. Um, so I just want to move an amendment, two dollars for two hours.
We're just dealing with this amendment at the moment. You're, if you want to signal a further amendment, then that's fine, but we're dealing with this one at the moment.
So I want to foreshadow that, and because I think the point that um Sam ma- Sam made is actually a really good one. And that is basically, we're gaining revenue from having people in our building. And I think it's unfortunate that we can't talk to the operators. But I think the fact that, you know, the Carter building, which we actually paid a large part for, I think we paid about thirty million for that building, that they have two dollars for two hours, and I think that's quite a reasonable thing for people. So I think actually we could spend a lot of time just trying to make an hour free. But actually, it would be better to get people staying longer and also to be getting some revenue. So I think two dollars for two hours would be a win-win. So I won't support um the motion that's been put forward, the amendment, because I support us actually doing something slightly different, which I think would achieve a similar outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie.
Um, if anyone can read, it says in seven point one that we have lost a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars worth of potential revenue, which is ridiculous. So um there there's just no way I can support this amendment. Um, the spending's the same before and after Covid. Um, and um, yeah, um, council parking's already cheaper than any other off-street parking as it is. It should be four dollars, in my opinion. And you can park on the street for free, and I do it all the time.
Thank you. Mike.
Thank you. I I wasn't planning to speak today. I was just coming here to vote on some quite, I guess, important decisions. But obviously, this has taken a different turn than I thought it would. And there's some comments around here, I guess. As an example about what creates perception, um, it's just ridiculous, some of the statements that have been made, and they're completely wrong. And I wonder if some of you have actually read the report, or you'd just like to make things up to make us look stupid as a council. Um, the the reality is, parking in this building is not free, even if when we offer it free. Um, and we, it will impact rates. And we're seeing the mover and the seconder, and people speaking for this are the champions for rate freezes, when we know this will impact rates. It's it's just astounding attitude of some of yous around this this table, taking populist decision-making points instead of basing your decisions on evidence, which it is clear that this isn't working. Free parking does not work, and there is no such thing as free parking. If we want to attract people into our city centre, we need to have attractions and things that actually get people in here. And it's not free parking. We know, we've heard from staff, there's over fifteen thousand publicly available car parks, and most of them are actually free. You know, it doesn't take much to find them. And in terms of our off-street car parking, we are a tiny player. We have nine hundred of those car parks. We don't need to be doing this. It is costing us money and money, apparently, that we can't afford to spend, according to you guys, that want to actually spend it. So I will not be supporting this amendment.
At the most basic level, um, I think we can, um, at the most basic level, I think there are some questions that we can answer very, very simply based on the the information that's in the report. And again, um, I want to take an evidence-based approach, and the information in the report is reasonably clear. What are we trying to do, which I enjoy increased footfall um and economic impact in the central city, particularly for small businesses in the retail and hospitality sectors? Has this intervention, um, as we come towards the end of it, achieved that? Looking at what's in the report, it would appear that it has not had um a significant benefit. It may well be that this has not achieved that at all. Um, does it represent value for money at a hundred thousand dollars a month? I think the answer to that question has got to be no, when we see that the impact has been minimal at best. Would we continue it? I think the answer to that has also got to be no, when you consider the cost and the minimal, if any, benefit in addressing the problem of increasing central city footfall that we sought to um solve in the beginning. So for those reasons, um, I'll be voting against. So I'll put the amendment. All those in favour? Oh, James, sorry. I didn't um see that.
Yeah, okay. Um, I'm one of the few who hasn't spoken yet, and I I didn't want to be left in the uh position of not saying anything and being the the uh the tipping point of this vote, because I've been trying, thinking about who who has indicated which way they're voting. So I want to make it clear that um I will not be supporting the amendment because I I agree with the cogent arguments that have been put forward. In principle, I I hope that the central city um can can thrive, but I don't believe this is the way to do it. So I just want to make it clear that that's what I'm doing.
Thank you. All right, so I'll um put the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment, say aye. And all those against, say no. No. So if we can have a show of hands for the ayes, please. Let's just do a division, since you've called for one. Yep.
So for the amendment, councillor Templeton. Councillor McLennan. Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Johansson.
No.
Councillor Galloway. Councillor Daniels.
No.
Councillor Coker.
Cow, or no. I'm just, you know, doing as a.
Councillor Chen. Councillor Scandret.
Yes.
Councillor Major. Councillor Keown.
Yes to Cars and Town.
Councillor Goth. Councillor Davidson. Councillor Cotter. Councillor Chu. And Councillor Turner.
No.
One, two, three, four, six.
That wasn't important.
So that's six, four, ten against, and that's lost.
Yeah, so the amendment is lost. Now, we've got Yanni signaling an amendment around um two dollars for two hours. Now, I'm sure we've received some information on this in the past around um some commercial risks and Commerce Commission um view um that may mean that we would have some advice against doing this. So this is a question for staff. Sorry, I framed it as a statement, but it's a question.
Um, yeah, correct. I mean, I I'd probably urge some caution around doing something exactly the same as a competitor. Um, and I guess the other point that's probably worth noting, if I may, um, is that one of the big comparisons um that gets made between central city parking and, say, parking at the malls is that parking at the malls is free. Two dollars, two hours for two dollars isn't free. It doesn't achieve that um, it doesn't achieve that balance, I suppose, which um people want or are striving to get. So um I'd urge cautious caution around um your matching what is seen as competitors in the market.
So given that advice, if such an amendment were to be put um and were to be successful, would it be capable of being implemented? Or would there be some risk in its implementation?
I I think there would be a a question we'd have to ask, would have to do some 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 research in terms of um whether that will cause issues for the organisation.
All right.
Sorry, as as the mover, can I just clarify? I mean, this goes on all the time. You look at bank interest rate. I'm happy to move a dollar ninety nine if it if it gets around that, but it does seem a bit weird that we can't, like, we can't put stuff forward. I mean, yeah, I I find it extraordinary, really.
All right, Ian Thompson is on his feet. Ian.
We've had this sort of debate um a number of times recently about amendments that are put that really require further work and further advice. If you want to ask staff to investigate that proposal, then fine. But I think if you are looking at making an amendment of that nature, you really are in breach of your decision-making responsibilities under the Act. And um Stephen, I think, is correct when you referred to competition issues. Um, we really need to deal with that with a little more care and attention than is possible if you were to make a decision today.
Yeah, so if any, if this were to um be considered, it would need to be considered on the back of advice that would be brought to us separately. I think I've heard enough to um say that I'm not prepared to accept this amendment and to rule it out of order. Thank you.
Sorry, where was, sorry, where was the advice for Jamie's amendment? Why wasn't the same approach taken? There was no option.
It was to continue it. I'll let Ian answer that question. Sorry, I won't fall into the trap of answering it.
I I think there is a difference between the two. Um, Jamie's ad- uh amendment was in relation to the same issue, I, I think there is a difference between the two. Um, Jamie's adv- uh, amendment was in relation to the same issue. But a different way of approaching it. The idea of, um, in fact, charging for parking and the implications for that. Is a different matter. I think they can be dealt with separately.
And we don't have the information in front of us to support such a decision today. That's, that's my thinking. Yeah.
Could we, could we change the wording and say that we'd like staff to report back on, on the options?
It's a different subject.
We can just edit as another.
It's not related to this.
Okay, hang on, hang on. Okay. So, um. And if, if people want extra work to be done, then they can ask for extra work to be done outside of this matter.
All right, cool. I'll do a notice.
Yeah. It doesn't need a notice of motion. We can ask for the work to be done. All right. Thank you. Um, so that brings us back to the, um, substantive resolution, the staff recommendation. Um, we've already had some debate on the amendment. I don't know whether people feel that we need further debate. The opportunity is there if we do. Um, so, um, we've got this in front of us. Does anybody wish to speak to it? Aaron?
Yeah, just really quickly, because I spoke earlier last time and then other people raised other issues. Um, one of the clear ones, and, and thanks Stephen for raising it, is there's a reason why malls have free parking at malls. To attract people and, and make the place really accessible. That's the complaint we get about town is that it's not accessible, even though we are an accessible city according to the plan. Um, it, it's not. And it's a clear complaint, complaint. And one of the barriers people say is paying to park and they prefer that in malls. Um, and, uh, we do, uh, by debating things, look terrible sometimes and it's, it's. But often members of the public, uh, say that we're car haters and today we get to prove that.
Thank you. Um, Anne?
Yes. Just to clarify, I do support staff's recommendation to confirm the termination of the current first hour free parking. Because there are more creative and effective ways to encourage people into the city. Rather than continue to rely on solutions that have clearly not achieved what we want to, um, achieve here. And it's time for the CCBA, for example, whom we fund, to actually step out and lead with some new. And exciting initiatives to bring people into our city.
Thank you. Pauline?
Oh, look, this, I just want to address this perception of free parking at the malls as well. It's not free either. Because the retailers in there pay a percentage of their profits to the management, who probably cover the cost of the. Value of that land that's put into parking. So, um, we, we have an accessible city. It's a fabulous city to cycle into. It's a fabulous city to bus into. And if you want to take your car in, you can park there for a very, very, very small cost. So I will be supporting the staff recommendation today.
Jake?
Yeah, I'm going to be abstaining just because I don't think that enough energy has been, or, or due consideration has been given to. Alternative ideas such as the one that councillor Johansson has, has suggested. And I don't agree that. The, that legal risk necessarily makes something out of order. It's very convenient.
Um, I'm going to be supporting the staff recommendation, um, purely and simply that there is no evidence. That continuing this scheme would provide the outcomes and the benefits that we sought to provide at the beginning. It's that simple. Um, quite apart from the fact that it would be $100,000 a month, um, not well spent. Sarah, I'm assuming anybody else wants to speak. So Sarah, I'll get you, or Tim, and then I'll come to you, Sarah, to close the debate.
Yeah, I mean, I, I supported the amendment because it's about sending a message to those central city retailers. It's not about the, 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 the fact or, or. The, the, the bottom line actually hasn't been, um, um, actually level. But there's not enough evidence to which way was going to, whether the bottom line is to, to make a judgment on this. When we say it's a loss of revenue to, and I do think that, um, it would be really good to bring in some new initiatives and some really outthinking. But when people are sweating and worrying, that I think a lot of the time, they're not going to be looking at how they can spend money. They're going to be pulling it into how they can be as economic as possible to keep the staff they've got. And to keep, say, changing hours, et cetera. To have two people working in a shop and giving your shop open another hour. And for someone to come in and buy one product or not come in at all, is a hell of a risk at the moment when the uncertainty of COVID is looming above everyone's head. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm kind of in two minds in this. So I just wanted to raise why I was supporting the amendment.
Thank you. So Sarah, I'll come to you to close the debate.
Thank you. It's fantastic that people are coming back into town again. And one of the reasons I've heard is that post-COVID, people were reluctant to go into the enclosed mall areas as much and liked the central sitting offering. As well as the great work that Christchurch NZ did to encourage people to come back in. Free parking was a bonus, but not the driver for people's trip in. And post-COVID, people wanted to have an experience, not just buy stuff. And so town was the place to be. And once again, we see the case of perception not being reality. The first was the post-COVID free on and off-street car parking. There was poor turnover for businesses and contrary to popular belief, not good for the city. It's really good to see clear data here that the first hour free has also been an inefficient and poor use. Of hard-earned ratepayers money at a time that they and we can't afford it. We effectively subsidised people who would have come into town anyway. A better way to encourage residents to spend in town would have been a monthly draw or cash prize or similar. Maybe $10,000 with one, with one entry for each time you spend in a central city business. This way it wouldn't matter how people came in or which parking building they used. And we also heard from Anthony Goff during the annual plan that we should be charging from pa- for parking. It's good for ratepayers, good for incentivising additional parking provision by developers. Being that these ideas and working with the businesses on them has been raised during previous car parking debates over several years. It'd be great for the central city momentum working party to finally pick them up. And mobility car parks in the central city are already free. So councillor Kewan's point regarding accessibility and incomes simply doesn't make sense. Councillor McDonald was clear that he doesn't think he has the right information to base his decision on, no baseline, those kind of things. But he's willing to bet a lot of ratepayers money on his hunch. And the more, the place you drive around looking for a car park for minutes and minutes and half an hour. And then walk 200 metres to the shop you want to go to, just like the CBD. Lots of free parking if you're okay to walk a short distance. There are many better ways to encourage a greater spend in the central city. And they involve focusing on the activities people want to do, not focusing on how they get there.
So I'll put the motion. All those in favour, say aye. Aye. Against? Yeah. Um, all right. So, um, if we can just get the noes to raise their hands please. So one, two, three, four, five against. Yeah, no, that's carried. Thank you. Did you? And an abstention from Jake.
Abstention from me as well. And from Yanni?
Yanni?
Yeah, abstention from me as well.
All right. Can we, let's, let's have a division so that we know exactly. So just call a division on this will be easier. Cause you're about to recall who voted what way. All right. Okay.
Councillor Galloway? Councillor Johansson?
Abstention.
Councillor Turner?
Yes.
Councillor McLennan?
Uh, abstention.
Councillor Major? Councillor Gough? Councillor McDonald?
No.
Councillor Kean? Councillor Cotter? Councillor Davidson? Councillor Scandret?
Uh, yes.
Councillor Chu? Councillor Coker? Councillor Templeton? Councillor Daniels? Councillor Chen?
Yes.
Okay. So the result of the voting?
So that's nine, four, five, no, and two abstentions. That's carried.
That's carried. Thank you. And thanks very much indeed to staff for, um, comprehensive answers to questions as well. Thank you very much indeed. All right. Now, um, we intended to break at one o'clock for lunch, but we've got one item left. Um, which I'm assuming we'll be able to deal with reasonably quickly. Um, so this is the mayor's report appointments to external organisations. Um, so Pauline's happy to move, Sam's happy to second. Are there any questions on this? Any debates? I'll put the motion. All those in favour, say aye. Against, that's carried. Okay. So there is no PX because it's just minutes, which we passed along with the other minutes anyway. Um, so, um, what I will now do, um, Melanie, having just passed what I'd referred to as the keep Melanie Cotter, uh, keep Melanie Coker busy paper. Um, I'll now call on you to close the meeting please. Closing the meeting. And I'll declare the meeting closed. Thank you very much. Thank you.